We good, Gary?
Larry.
Larry.
Riley.
Riley. Jim, Bob, Sue, Tim.
We're good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Ridgecrest City Council. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at 5:01 PM with roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
President.
Mr. Roger Rotnum.
President.
Mr. Hammond.
Heyman.
God, what is wrong with me tonight? Mr. Heyman?
President.
Ms. Breeden?
Present.
Five ayes, Moshe. We have a quorum.
We got a quorum.
We have a quorum. And since we're all in a jovial mood, I'm going to share my thoughts from our speaker. All just came in about a minute before the meeting started. And I just want to remind everyone why it's so wonderful to be in Ridgecrest, and that is that you can get from your office to the council in five minutes if you're really running late. And I know that me and Solomon both have the staff shortage problems right now. It's a very, Scott as well, that it's a convenient benefit, so. Next item is approval of our agenda for this evening. Do I have any changes to the agendas presented? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, we'll be going into closed session. First opportunity is for public comment on the closed session. Closed session, we conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. The name of the case is Mojave Pistachios versus Indian Wells Valley Water District. Is there any public comment on the closed session? Seeing none from the floor and none on the phones, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And adjourn into closed session. We will reopen the meeting at 6:00 PM. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome back to our meeting. We'll go ahead and return out of our closed session. If I can start the meeting by asking everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Please join me in prayer if you could. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Thank you for this little town where we live and cherish. Lord, I pray for our country. Give your wisdom to our leadership. Lord, I pray for our troops who are in harm's way. Protect them from all evil. Lord, I pray for our police department. Give them your protection, and also the police department elsewhere, Lord. Let your protection be on all of them. Lord, their lives are on line from the time they leave their house and then from the time to the time they come back. Lord, give them your protection. Lord, be with all of us today. Let, give your wisdom to the council, Lord. Let the actions which you make be beneficial to this community. Bless each one of us here, Lord, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for that. Next will be our attorney report out of closed session. Martin? Okay, Martin, I don't see him on there.
His screen froze up.
His screen froze up. He locked up. I'll go ahead and just report out of committee. We, the closed session was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, case Mojave Pistachios, LLC versus Indian Wells Valley Water District. Direction given, no, no report. Okay, next is our presentations. We have three presentations today. And we'll go ahead and begin by asking for, Chief is on his way, and if I can have Officers Kenny and Stengel, and if I can ask the rest of the council to join me at the podium.
So we're here tonight to honor a couple of our officers for the exceptional work that they did. On December 27th of last year, Officer Kenny and Officer Stengel were dispatched to an address on Ridgecrest Boulevard for a report of a subject not breathing due to an overdose. When they arrived, they located the subject who had no pulse or respirations, and the witness at the scene advised that this subject had been down for about 10 minutes, and the overdose was due to fentanyl. So they worked on the subject for about 10 minutes, and the subject started breathing and starting to come to. And in the end of this, he was able to walk to the gurney and transported by liberty and fire to the hospital. These two are to be commended for their quick actions, life-saving efforts to ensure the safety of this individual, which saved his life. So I want to thank these two for the exceptional work they did that day. Thank you.
We have an incredible police department, and if I can do one of those every single council meeting, that would be spectacular. So thank you once again to our incredible officers. I have a proclamation to present for this evening, and I believe, is Tracy where Tracy is? Okay, just want to make sure. And I have, I believe I also have some fire, some of my fire station peoples. Excellent. Thank you, officers. So this is a proclamation of the city of Ridgecrest, and if you're not aware, we've done this now for several years, and this is our safely surrendered baby awareness month. And I'm going to go and read the proclamation. And once again, if you haven't heard, we will do everything in our power to make sure that a child is cared for, and that's what this month is about, is do not ever feel out there that you do not have an option. There's always somebody there to help. So whereas, the safely surrendered baby law was created in 2001 with the intent to save the lives of newborn infants, at risk of abandonment by encouraging parents or persons with lawful custody to safely surrender the infant within 72 hours of birth with no questions asked. And whereas, since 2006, the safely surrendered baby law has saved 90 infants in Kern County alone and placed them in loving homes. And whereas, in Ridgecrest and throughout Kern County, a newborn baby can be safely surrendered into the hands of any hospital, emergency room, or fire station staff. And whereas, the safely surrendered baby coalition, under the coordination of the Department of Human Services, works to educate Ridgecrest citizens and all Kern County individuals representing a, all Kern County residents about this important law. Sorry, I jumped a line there. The coalition is made up of a small group of dedicated individuals representing a long list of agencies, nonprofits, hospitals, and stakeholders, including First Five Kern, Ridgecrest Regional Medical Center, Kern County Fire Department, Kern County, Kern Medical, Mercy Memorial Hospitals, and Adventist Health, to name a few. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Ridgecrest, does hereby proclaim, the month of February is safely surrendered baby awareness month, and encourages all Ridgecrest citizens to reach out and assist the safely surrendered baby coalition with their endeavors. Proclaim the second day of February 2022. Thank you for all of your efforts, both of you.
On behalf of the Department of Human Services, I would like to thank you for this proclamation. Very important law, saving many babies' lives. In 2001, I can't remember if you mentioned that in the proclamation, but in 2001, there were six babies that were surrendered. So we're up to 90 to date from when the law became permanent. So it's a great program, great law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. I thank you for all of your efforts. Okay. Okay. Next, we have one presentation. If I can ask Megan to come on up, and our HFNH consultant. Welcome, sir. And make sure it hits the button on the mic. We'll go quiet.
We're on the.
Hey, Phillip, I'll start with the introduction. As you know, that beginning January of this year, the city has to be in compliance with SB 1383, which is organic trash, which will require us to have a third can. We have Phillip here, Manolfi, from HFNH to give an overview of the law. You know that we've been talking about bringing this forward. We have a couple of items tonight on the agenda regarding the SB 1383 program, as well as in the next couple of weeks, we're bringing the first reading of our change of ordinance and a few other matters, including in the next couple of months, a new agreement with waste management. So this is just the formal part tonight of having Phillip from HFNH come and be able to describe to council what the law is and be able to answer the council and the public's questions they may have on this. So with that.
There is a presentation. So you should be able to pick through it now with the, are you having issues? One moment, please. Technical difficulties. There we go.
So in 2016, Governor Brown signed SB 1383, which is aimed at targeting short-lived climate pollutants. And specifically, we're here today to talk about methane. And they want to prevent methane for several reasons. It's a super pollutant that's 70 to 80 times more impactful on the environment than carbon dioxide. And that manifests itself in cyclical droughts, longer droughts, forest fires, wildfires, and coastal erosion. So what they want to target in California is getting food waste and organic waste out of landfills. It's the largest generator of methane in the state. Accounts for almost 40% of methane generated. And also, one in five children was food insecure prior to the pandemic. That number's gotten worse. So clearly, there's an opportunity that can connect all of this food that's being wasted with the food insecure community. So the goal of 1383 is to eventually get 75% of organic waste out of the landfill statewide, and to recover 20% of edible food that is disposed for human consumption. So hopefully, we can start feeding the food insecure communities. So there's some key dates here, and you'll notice on the upper left, it says 2022 to 2023. The legislation actually took effect January 1, 2022, so these were required as of January 1, 2022. But SB 619, which I'll talk about on the next slide, has allowed for a delayed compliance pathway, which we'll be exploring. So as of January 1, 2022, residents and businesses are supposed to be provided with organic waste collection services. The city would have to establish edible food programs that would connect generators of edible food, high-volume generators with the food insecure communities, food recovery organizations, and food recovery services. It's also required that you educate generators. They can't properly participate in programs if they don't know about them. And ultimately, when all of this organic waste is diverted from the landfills, there's going to be a lot of recovered organic waste products, things like compost, mulch, renewable natural gas, that will need to be procured. So you're going to have a procurement target as well, which we'll cover in a little bit. And finally, you'll also be responsible for organic material capacity planning. This is ultimately a county responsibility, but as a jurisdiction, you will have to work with the county, respond to their questions, and give them some information as it's requested. Ultimately, you're responsible for the compliance of generators with this legislation. So from 2022 to 2024, if you find they're not compliant, your obligation is to educate them. But beginning in 2024, you'll have to enforce this through notices of violation. And if they ultimately don't correct them, they would receive an administrative penalty. If you don't implement these programs or the enforcement, you could be subject to fines of up to $10,000 per major violation per day. So if you don't offer organic waste services, that could be a $10,000 per day fine. If you don't offer edible food recovery, that also could be a $10,000 per day fine. They could compound if you have multiple major violations. And on an ongoing basis, you're going to be required to keep records and report to the state on all of this activity in your compliance. And we'll go through that towards the end, as you start seeing the volume of programs and things that happen. And I'll talk a little bit more about the data points that you'll need to maintain. So I briefly mentioned SB 619, and that was passed in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, acknowledging that municipalities and local governments had a lot of challenges. They've given some leeway to jurisdictions for a delayed compliance pathway to comply at a later date. So there's a few primary aspects to this. You have to submit a notice of intent to comply, which is description of your violations and that your intended timeline for correcting them. You also have to pass an ordinance that will allow you, sorry, that was for grant funding, and you'll have to give a detailed explanation of why you haven't complied. There's a lot of COVID nexuses, right? You've been reacting to COVID pandemic in your community. There's supply chain shortages for haulers and processors, so getting equipment to even provide this service can be a challenge. So that has been taken care of. And you'll see an item later tonight that will talk about what the plan is for moving forward and request your approval to submit that to the state, so the programs can be implemented at a later date opposed to January 1, 2022. Essentially, if this plan is accepted, you'll be put on a corrective action plan, and fines will not begin accruing in 2022. They will start accruing in 2023, but they may also be waived if you follow through with your plan. If you choose not to follow through with your plan and you do not comply on the timeframe that you've given, then ultimately, they could go retroactively and assess these fees. So I mentioned earlier, you have to have mandatory organic waste collection. And Senate Bill 1383 offers a slew of options, one container, two container, three container, four container. But a lot of it's limited to the infrastructure. If you have a one or a two container system, it has to go to what's called a high diversion MRF, which recovers 75% of organic waste. To my knowledge, to this day, one of those does not exist. There are several companies that have promising technology and may hit those, but at this point, there is none. And given your geographic location and the population density, it'd be cost prohibitive to try to build a plant like that. It would be in the tens of millions of dollars. So what we would like to do is move to a three container, source-separated system, where your blue cart would be for recyclables, your green would be for organic waste, and your black would be for your refuse. And acknowledging that processing this and adding containers and trucks will have rate impacts, staff's doing everything they can to mitigate those. So we're exploring every other week trash collection. If you take all of your food waste and put it in the organics, that's really the putrescible waste. So your black can would only have things like the containers that your laundry detergent comes in. It's half-metal, half-plastic, glued together with a bunch of, you know, polymer or something that couldn't really be recycled economically. So it shouldn't have smell or odors or vectors or anything like that if everything else is properly placed in the other containers. And that would obviously result in less collection, less trucks. So that would mitigate some of the costs. We'll also be talking about the grant funding later tonight, and there's an item about that that will help offset some of the costs as well. Another requirement is that you establish edible food recovery programs. And it starts with tier-one edible food generators, and then moves to tier-two edible food generators in 2024. The tier-one edible food generators are your large supermarkets, grocery stores that are over 5,000 square feet. And then the tier-two is when you start moving into restaurants with 250 seats and over 5,000 square feet. So it's really targeting large generators. You know, it's not going to be looking at the cafeteria here at the city hall. And your obligation is to ensure that they contract with the food recovery organization or service to accept any of the edible food that they have. You'll also be responsible for conducting education outreach to the communities surrounding these programs. You can do that via digital technology, printouts, mailers. There's a whole slew of ways you can do it. And obviously, additional education outreach could have further costs. We're exploring a lot of avenues to mitigate those or remove those education costs. Obviously, as you roll out new programs, there's going to be some new costs. But on an ongoing basis, as the waste hauler's sending newsletters or billing inserts, we can transition the messaging they're currently sending to include the few data points required by SB 1383. So really, we're just putting new media on the media that's already going out, a new topic. And that's ultimately what we'll be seeking, the CalRecycle grant funding, is to help with that initial education. We'll have a presentation on that later. I touched on the procurement requirement, and there's two primary procurement requirements. One of them is that you procure mulch, compost, or renewable natural gas. We're exploring avenues with the county now. As they process the waste, we're hoping that the sales of those will offset your tip fee when you bring it to the county. So ultimately, it will lower your costs if they sell that material on the backend, rather than you procuring it and paying for it and spreading it here within the city. The other requirement is that you procure paper products and printing and writing paper consistent with the Public Contracts Code. Essentially, if there's recycled content paper or printing and writing supplies that's the same price or cheaper than virgin supplies, then you would have to buy the recycled content. Right now, recycled content's about 30% more expensive. If you go down to Staples and try to get recycled content paper, so you could, but you're also already procuring a lot of recycled content. So it'll manifest itself through a procurement policy amendment that you'll see coming shortly. You're also responsible for monitoring and conducting enforcement. And the enforcement aspect starts in 2024, when you would have to give administrative, or notices of violation, and ultimately, within 90 days, an administrative penalty if the violation's not corrected. Obviously, there may, you might need resources, bodies, and costs associated with that in order to go enforce, do inspections and things like that. We are looking to move some of this to third-party. You can't obviously impose fines through a third-party, but you can have things like the route reviews where they're going and looking for contamination could be conducted by your waste hauler. So that would be much easier than having a third-party go out and paying someone else to do the routing and lid flipping. There's also voluminous record-keeping and reporting requirements. That's going to exponentially expand your annual report, and it needs to be kept on an ongoing basis that's accessible to the state within 10 business days. So all of the programs we talked about here today, you give a citation, needs to go into the implementation record. You procure paper, needs to go into the implementation record. You have to list what facilities you're taking it to, a description of your collection program, a copy of your franchise agreements, ordinances. I'm not going to go through the whole list. You get the idea. There's a lot of them. And ultimately, the state will start enforcing this, and they have given a little bit of reprieve, but they're in the motion now. They're going to be conducting inspections with the city. They currently do that as they do their annual review process. They'll go out, they may stop at the building counter to see if you're CalGreen compliant. They may go look at your collection programs out in the field. So that's not really a change. They're just looking that you're complying with new enhanced programs. As I mentioned earlier, you could have penalties ranging from $500 to $10,000 per violation, depending on what they are. A minor violation would be $500. A major violation would be $10,000. CalRecycle has come out and stated they want to work with jurisdictions, and their intent is not to just come out and give you a fine. But if you ultimately decide that you don't want to do anything that they ask you to, then you could be subject to these fines. And I'm not going to talk about the corrective action plan process, because that will be covered when we talk about the notice of intent to comply. So our next steps are, today, you'll have an item in front of you for the notice of intent to comply. So what that'll do is we're basically presenting our plan to CalRecycle for how we will come into compliance in the next few years. And if they accept it, they will put us on a corrective action plan process, where they'll be monitoring that plan and our compliance. And obviously, we acknowledge things may shift, and they'll be willing to work with you to some extent. Like right now, if you need to buy a trash truck, that could take anywhere from 12 months to two years. We have people that have put in orders in 2020 that haven't gotten them yet. So that's, obviously, if your trash trucks don't come in, that could be an allowable extension. And then on February 16th, we'll bring forward an SB 1383 ordinance. As I mentioned earlier, you're ultimately responsible for the compliance of your generators. And in order to qualify for grant funding, you need to have an ordinance in place. That's one of the, one of the important aspects. And the grant funding is based on population. So the estimated grant funding available for Ridgecrest right now is just under $40,000. But that's assuming everyone in the state applies for the grant. Given the timing of it, we know JPA's can't, because they'd have to have all of their members pass the approval and then go to the JPA board. So I don't think that a lot of people will be able to get them in in time. So that $40,000 could actually be more money, depending on how the first and second round of grant funding go. We're currently working with Waste Management to explore all avenues for mitigating rate increases. So in summer of 2022, we'll be bringing an item to a council for the restated and amended agreement. And at that time, we'll have oversight as to what the potential refuse rate increases would be. Again, you're not committing to the rate increases tonight. You're committing that you're going to, we're going to go work on this negotiation, look at the rates, and come back and present that to you. And then in the summer or fall of 2022, the three-container organic waste collection services will start to be implemented for commercial customers. Going back to supply chain issues, it's really tough to get carts and lids right now. So we're going to implement the residential at a later date. There's also staffing issues with trying to relid existing containers, which is another cost-saving mechanism that we're exploring. So in January 2023, that's when the residential program would become into effect. That also allows for the hauler and the city to educate generators prior to the implementation of these programs, so they're not appropriately participate, and they don't get hit with contamination fees or anything like that. So with that, I've included some extra CalRecycle, I guess, details and information. If anyone wants to look at it, it's in the staff report. So you don't have to write it down now, but if you have any questions, I'm here to.
So you blew through that pretty quick.
Sorry, I told 10 minutes, so.
No, no, that's fine. So there's a lot, I think there's a lot, I mean, all of us probably have, I mean, I know I have pages and pages of questions. And I know that last time I talked to Ron, he said, well, just, just wait till you're here, and we could, we could ask those questions. But sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's your meeting. I just, I'm sure we got a lot to go over.
Go for it, Kyle.
Just remember that it is coming up in two other items, future in the agenda. So some of it can wait if you need to.
So you may want to wait until it's questions, like with the NOIC or something to that.
Of course, I turned it off. If it's a question with the NOIC, you might want to wait till that agenda item versus the overview. Depends on, yeah.
Go for it. I was just reminding you, there's two.
No, 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 thanks. Yeah, it is. But I think that you just gave the presentation. Now would be the time to ask most of our questions. That's what makes it most sense to me. And so I think that, and this is going to be aimed at Megan, and maybe you can, you know, Megan and Ron, and what most people are seeing right now is that you just gave us a, this is what you guys have to do from the state. This is, this is coming, whether you like it or not, it's happening. But what I guess I wanted to comment on and start asking questions about, well, instead of, even though we know it's coming, it happened in 2016, maybe we can, my God, that's loud, maybe we can look at this, look at the positive aspects of what we're doing, why we're doing it, what's the whole point of us being here. But to get there, I think we have to talk through the step-by-step stuff. I think, I mean, people, I just remarked how quick you, you gave that to us. The city's been putting a lot of stuff out on social media as much as they can. Hey, this is coming. So everybody knows this is coming. We didn't ask for it, but it's coming. And trying to be positive at the same time. So I think, can we step through some of those things? And we slow down a little bit and step through what it looks like for the average citizen, something like this? Because I think if people just saw that, unless they're going on the CalRecycle website and looking on the literature, which most people aren't, then, you know, they're expecting us to do that. It's our job. So I just want to step through the day-to-day stuff. And I know, Megan, you have been heads down in this. Just, it's been killing you for a while.
Yeah, I am completely in the dump right now, so.
Nope. Did you, intent, pun intended.
So I know that a lot of California's sort of mentality behind this is geared for climate change and capturing those methane gases. And it's going to look a little different here in our community. Obviously, we don't quite fit in with a lot of the bigger communities. So it's going to be definitely a work in progress as we work through implementing this program. And I expect CalRecycle is going to make some changes as well at their end of things, especially regarding procurement.
Sure.
So I think it's going to be a learning curve for the entire state in terms of how that looks.
Sure, sure. I think it has to. Absolutely. So can we, so the three, so I think what I want to do is make sure that people understand that this is coming along just as fast for us as it is for everybody else. We are trying to do this as a city. We're trying to get, you know, as much behind it positively as we can. So we're presenting the right, the right face, and people are being educated on this as much as we can. Because it is a, it's a city fix, right? What we're doing is trying to implement a city solution to what the state sees as a problem. So I'm going to ask a few questions there, maybe. Sorry if I'm dragging the song, guys, but I really think that this is such a big issue that if we don't step it out, we're not doing a good service to the, to the average citizen.
Kyle, I've had, I've had four or five city work meetings going through this, so I understand, knock yourself out.
Okay, well, so, so we'll just start at the, at the small stuff, just, what is it going to look like? We know we have three containers, is every container going to be the same? Are they all the same size?
That's a perfect starting point.
Yep.
So currently, you have a recycling container and a green trash container. Under the new legislation, you can have, you can't have a whole green container for your trash. You could have a green container with a black lid for your trash, or you could have an all-black container, but you can't have an all-green with a green lid. So we're going to take your current trash container, and we're going to put a black lid on that. So your trash, trash still goes in that green container, it's just going to have a different lid, and it's going to have appropriate signage, it's going to tell you what can and can't go in it. And you're also going to get a new gray container that has a green lid, and that's going to be for your organic waste. That also is going to be appropriately labeled, that's going to have what's allowed in there and prohibited contaminants. Obviously, it's not going to have an exhaustive list of everything that can't go in there, but it's going to give you, you know, a good picture, idea.
And so that's going to be kind of back to us, the municipality, to make sure we're educating people on everything. We're getting out mailers, and people are understanding what exactly can go in. Info, I mean, and, and down to the littlest stuff, right? I've been getting tons of questions, are my coffee grounds going in there? Can I have a biodegradable bag that uses a liner in my kitchen? Can I use that? I don't know, probably not, I'm guessing.
To, to address the bag, we did reach out to Chuck at the Kern County Public Works, and we got written confirmation that the jurisdiction will be able to use compostable bags for collecting food scraps. So in the kitchen pail, excuse me, in the kitchen pail that's distributed, they'll be able to use those compostable bags to hopefully help reduce the vector issues with waste management. So anything like yuck, the yuck factor, I guess you could call it. Hopefully, that'll help, so the bins won't be getting disgusting.
Bring up a good point, Megan, on the kitchen pails, I didn't address those. So obviously, right now, most people throw their food in the trash can in their kitchen, right? You have your youngest child bringing it out to the curb.
Well, yeah, well, so your, so your kitchen, and I'm just going to pause you for a minute, or your garbage disposal, right? There's a lot of people out there that I'm sure are waiting for me to say that, that, you know, what we are seeing is we're trying to implement a city solution, but some people are already a part of that solution, some people are already doing a compost. There are some people who are getting stuff down into a garbage disposal, they're, they're not generating a whole lot of waste. So I would imagine if they're watching right now, they're going, okay, why? Right, why am I doing this? And I think that's, I'm going to let you keep saying what you were saying, but I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm acknowledging that, yeah, we, we understand that this is a citywide solution to a big problem, and that we just need everybody to understand that education's going to be a part of this, so everybody understands from, from cradle to grave what's happening, and we'll get into that, but.
It's a, it's a city solution to a state mandate.
To, to a state mandate, but let me just say, and I'm maybe the one person on the sport that's maybe a little bit more optimistic, I think that it's a, you know, I don't think I've been to the dump in the last, you know, I don't know, couple of years where I've backed up to it and thought, man, this thing isn't full enough. You know, like, there needs to be more stuff thrown into the dump. I, I can see, and we all know, I mean, we, I think, I don't know how many times I've been through Vegas and looked at a, you know, you look at a buffet, well, wow, what are we doing with that food? Right? So then look, look back at Ridgecrest, look at the state of California. Do they have some good tenants? Yes. Am I proud of the way it was done? Of course not. We're implementing a one-size-fits-all to an enormous state with several different climates that, you know, that's another thing, we get down into the weeds of what things look like and how things biodegrade, which is another question I'm going to ask you as we get along. So sorry, I'm going to go ahead and pause for a second and let you keep going.
You brought up a lot of great points there, and one of them was the backyard composters, and we appreciate the effort that they're making to take things out of the dump. But the state mandate, it does allow for self-hauling of organics or for backyard composting, but it also requires that a jurisdiction provides an organic waste collection system. Under previous legislation, like AB 1826, you were required to offer it. That word "provide" means it has to be given to them. And I think one of the things that a lot of people think is, oh, I'm composting in my backyard, but a lot of people don't compost meat, bones, and dairy and things like that. If you're putting your food down your food disposal, that's not accounting for any yard waste you might have, or, you know, that holiday tree that you picked up. So that was the intent, is that even people who are doing some of these activities, they're not capturing all organics because it's an expanded definition compared to previous legislation.
And, and while we're looking at the trash cans here, we know that's what it's going to look like at the residences. But what about when we get to the, you know, the commercial businesses? You know, they already have enclosures for their trash and what they're doing, are they going to have to build, and we're going to acquire them through policy to, to build new structures to keep those closed and locked down?
I know in our discussions with Heather and Ron, please feel free to jump in here if I'm getting off track. I know for any new development, the trash enclosures should have that consideration already in place to have for the organics, for businesses at least. And that'll be a consideration moving forward to make sure that there's enough space in those closures for new development. For existing development that may have issues with space constraints, CalRecycle does provide a waiver for a physical constraint waiver. However, they are, they advise jurisdictions to be very, what's the word?
Conservative.
Conservative, with, thank you, with how that they administer those, because from their perspective, there's a lot of ways to address those challenges, whether it's a smaller bin, or a split bin, or sharing bins between businesses. So in their mind, they think that those waivers should be given out sparingly because there should be ways to address the issues without having to give a waiver.
And it should, they should be right-sized at the multifamily and commercial, the larger generators. If you have a three-cubic-yard bin, that could be downsized to a two-cubic yard because you're pulling out all that organic waste, which accounts for approximately 40% of the waste that's disposed in landfills in California. And that would also help mitigate cost impacts if you're downsizing your trash collection, that may create more space.
I got, so I got, sorry, guys, I'll, I'll ride along on my, I got hours worth of.
You have hours. I, clarifying one of the things that you talked about in the waiver, there's, there's also a difference between the commercial businesses that clearly do not operate in the organic space versus not operating in the organic space.
There is a de minimis waiver available to commercial and business, not to residents. I did check with CalRecycle because I was hoping we could maybe offer that to our residents, people who don't have a lot of organic waste. Unfortunately, that is off the table, residents are required to have the service, but businesses that generate, I believe it's less than two cubic yards.
If you generate less than two cubic yards of all streams combined, that's trash recycling and green waste or organics, then you need to have less than 10 gallons of organics. If you generate more than two cubic yards of all those streams combined, it's less than 20 gallons. So the prototypical example I always use is an auto shop, right? You might have one or two people that are throwing out, they're left over from their lunch, not a lot of organics. We go back to that, organics is expanded now, they have, that includes all.
Tree limbs.
Tree limbs, paper, cardboard, all of that's considered organics. And while that would be collected and you're recycling, you're still required to have the organics program. So it may be hard to find people who are having less than 10 gallons, and, and, yeah.
Okay, so then we get on to what's going to be done with the compost. I think that's, I have a few questions, it's hard for me to get them all out at once. So what's going to be done with the compost? Now, some quick questions, I, you know, I stopped and talked to Ron, and I've talked to Megan, just to figure out what's going on, at least here in Ridgecrest. It's going to be hauled over to Kern County, right, to a site, I think the site's called Mount Vernon, right? So it's going to be hauled over there. Now, I am not sure, I don't even know if the county knows exactly what they're going to do with all that I'm, I'm seeing as compost. Who, do you guys know what they're going to do with it? Because I don't know if that's been vetted out yet.
I'm going to kick that to our city manager, Ron, because procurement is definitely a big issue with this, so I'm going to defer to Ron's.
Are, are you asking what the county's going to do with the compost that they generate?
Yes, yes.
I would assume that they may sell some of it on the open market, and then probably a considerable amount will go to the local farming. And that's, hopefully, some of it will come back to the cities to be able to help address some of our compost needs. I know we, we use compost every year during certain times of year for our parks, so.
Well, I was even going to say, I, you know, I would, I know this is, does SB 1383 allow for the cities themselves to use some of that compost? Not just in city projects, but like, let's just say there is a community garden, and let's just say there is a, you know, a community distribution for that compost, so anybody out of the city can go get that compost.
Right, we are, we're working something out in our agreement with Waste Management, where we will have some compost that we'll be able to provide to the community as part of a compost giveaway.
And then, okay, thank you. And then we touched on briefly, we, we, we laddered across the food distribution, which I think is a, is a wonderful thing. You know, we've got a state of the, the size of California, I mean, it's, here even in Ridgecrest, we see, there are people who need some of that distributed food, and I think it's a great part of the program. How is Ridgecrest going to implement that? I mean, we know, I know that many of the churches provide hot meals for people throughout the week. Is some of that food going to be able to be distributed to those types of organizations? Now, I know you don't have all the answers right now, but I'm, I'm hoping for a lot of them.
Yeah, so as a jurisdiction, you have to ensure that all your large commercial edible food generators contract with the food recovery organization or service. The organization would be somebody you drop it off at, a service would come pick it up from you. And also, you'll be responsible for reporting on how many tons were diverted from landfill or recovered for human consumption to the state. We acknowledge that, you know, food recovery is a regional, not, I just want to say we, I'm not the state, but we, we acknowledge that it's a regional issue and that there may not be sufficient infrastructure here, which is why the county is ultimately responsible for evaluating the, the infrastructure for edible food recovery throughout the entire county, including incorporated jurisdictions. If there's not enough capacity, then eventually you will have to help develop capacity for the recovery of the edible food. But I don't see that happening anytime soon, because I'm not aware of many counties that have that program in place, and they're going to have to aggregate all the data from all the cities and their unincorporated areas, report to the state, determine if there's enough and not enough, calculate how much edible food you're going to have. So that's going to take a little bit, but if they do determine at the state or the county level that you don't have enough, then you may have to help build some infrastructure.
Gotcha.
And I have talked with some of the food recovery organizations here in town. I know Salvation Army is kind of the primary one, they have contracts with some of our major tier-one CEFGs, like Grocery Outlet, Walmart, and I believe Albertson's. I believe Stater Brothers currently backhauls their edible food, which is still allowable, if I understand correctly, under SB 1383, as long as it's not being landfilled. So we're going to be working with Salvation Army and some of the other food recovery organizations, like the Women's Shelter and some of the smaller, more food pantries, like the churches, to kind of figure out what we can do to help that process move along and make sure that everybody's being covered.
I think the last thing I would add is, the way they've structured tier-one and tier-two in the simplest form is that tier-one is typically shelf-stable food, like canned beans and stuff, where tier-two is the prepared foods, maybe from a caterer or a really large restaurant, that would be subject to, you know, food safety requirements. So the intent was that there's a two-year on-ramp, so you can start building up the processes and infrastructure, the transportation, and then move into some of those trickier foods that need to be refrigerated or frozen.
And so I thought when you were talking about businesses that are going to be impacted, you at some point, I think you said, so how are our smaller restaurants going to be impacted?
Your smaller restaurants won't, they have to have at least 250 seats and 5,000 square feet. The one caveat I would add is 5,000 square feet is the entire building area, so if you had a TA truck stop, for example, which you don't have here in town, and it has a subway with 250 seats, but the, you know, subway's not 5,000 square feet, but that whole building would, could be. So that would technically be an edible food generator.
Okay, I see. All right, so what I started to step through, but I keep getting ahead of myself, so I apologize to the public, but I just got to, want to make sure that we're, that I'm stepping through as many questions as comes to mind, and the reason is, what I don't want to see is anybody questioning the city, like, how, well, question the city all you want, please do, but I want everybody to know that we're, that we're stepping through this methodically. So, I mean, we, I know that at some point, there was issues with, with, we were coming up with the trash program a couple of years ago, right, Peggy, that was, I forget which year that was, you'd remember. So as long as we're addressing and making sure, you know, any kind of lessons learned we have from the past, we're stepping forward, this is just another aspect of let's get our hands around a large problem. It is a problem. Sorry, Skip. Right now, let's start with recycling. I think there is, I've, I've heard rumors in Ridgecrest where people believe that recycling's not even done correctly. They come by, they pick it up, they dump the can in the trash can, that truck goes right to the dump and dumps it in the dump. Megan, have you talked with Waste Management and talked about that process? Now, I know this isn't recycling, this is organics, but I want to make sure that we're talking about it.
Yeah, we, we have talked with Waste Management about their process for how they pick up the trash, where it goes. I know we did do a post a while ago specifically related to the life cycle of trash to try and kind of correct that, that mentality that it's all going into our landfill. I believe there's a transfer site where things are sorted, and then they are taken to an additional processing facility for recyclables. And I believe we have Josh Mann here as well tonight.
Yeah, if he's around.
If he's available.
Sorry, sorry, just put you on the spot.
Sorry, Josh.
No, no, great question. So yes, the recyclables collected, both from commercial businesses as well as residential generators, is hauled to Pearson's, so we use a, a local business as our transfer site. Obviously, they're engaged in recycling of all sorts of, of commodities. That material, though, is, is kept separate from anything else that you would bring there, so if you're getting your CRV, that stays with Pearson's. But our material goes into a transfer truck. That transfer truck goes down to one of our two MRFs located closer to the LA Basin, either in Sun Valley or Azusa. And you're probably saying, Josh, why are you hauling it all the way down there? And it has a lot to do with where your recyclables end up. Unfortunately, not a lot of recyclable market here in Ridgecrest, so not a lot of buyers of ones and tw plastics or, or mixed paper. So the reason why that we're doing it there is, is that you take advantage of economies of scale, right? We're taking all of our material from throughout Southern California and being able to process it through a, a high-technology facility that obviously Ridgecrest is only have to pay their fractional share of to, to operate and maintain. And then ultimately, you're deriving the benefits of the fact that Waste Management employs the largest broker network essentially in the industry to be able to find a home for all of those recycled materials. And I'll be happy to say that even through China Sword, that we never had to stop collecting something here in Ridgecrest or had to put anything into the landfill. So, great question.
Okay, yeah, no, and so I guess while you're already in the hot seat.
Sure.
Sure, and how do you see, oh, walk through that same process? So you're going to, so we will see, I know it's been proposed, we will see at least probably once a week, the pickup of organics.
It's required, under the regulation, it has to be weekly.
And is that a, why is it required?
The regulation, regulation requires it, I think there's a multitude of factors, the, probably the prime factor is the fact that organics breaks down very, very quickly. And so the thought is, is that the state would like to move that material from the point where it's generated to the points where it's processed in the most direct, quick fashion to ensure that it does get on to its second life. So it is required weekly. The regulation does allow, though, for the flexibility in having every other week recycling, which Ridgecrest already does for both commercial and residential generators, as well as, and I think that Phil alluded to, the opportunity potentially to flex and do every other week for your regular landfill-bound trash collection.
Okay. You're loading up, you're heading to Bakersfield.
Wow, is it Shaftor, is that where Mount Vernon is?
So yes, and great question about the county's process. County, county's actually been a great partner in this, in the fact that we're only having to collect that material and take it to their transfer site that's located at the Ridgecrest landfill. landfill. That material is going currently into the transfer truck, because we're already collecting our organics from businesses and have been since 2018, and going to currently Mount Vernon, although the county is in the process of establishing another similar site at their Schafter location. So they really are expecting a huge amount of organic material to be coming in, and they wanna have the processing capabilities to ensure that they can process it all out as compost. And they're also exploring other alternative uses for that material, such as energy generation.
Right. That was gonna be one of my questions, so I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you. Okay. So let's move on to, I know you've been working with or you're trying to work with through Waste Management with CalRecycle to figure out how this is gonna impact the average person. There are people, I think I need to make sure I acknowledge that it's not lost on me, there are people who, they're on a fixed income, right? This is going to impact people, and there's no way around it. I think we need to make sure we're talking about that. This is gonna impact people. Are we, the city, city staff, doing everything we can to mitigate that?
Short answer is yes. We are looking at all avenues of ways that we can implement this as painlessly as possible. We know it is not an ideal situation that we find ourselves in for our community, but that's why we're working with the LEA to try to see if we can implement that biweekly solid waste collection with the new implementation of weekly organics, because we believe that would help offset the cost to the rate increase. So we've been working with HFNH as well as our local enforcement agency to make sure we can go that route. And Ron, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add regarding...
No, I think you covered it well.
Yeah, I'll add one thing, which is to understand for the public, in terms of this public discussion, is there is not another agency that's gone to the LEA for this. We are acting as a leader in trying to look at alternatives in order to manage those costs for our community. A leader, not a follower, but a leader in trying to make it as a cost affordable for our community as possible.
I would echo that sentiment. I've done this for around 50 jurisdictions, and you're the first one that I'm encountering that's gone to the LEA to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
And just to make a point, we, there are other jurisdictions that have the biweekly, I believe Renton, Washington, and Portland even does implement this. So even though we're the first jurisdiction maybe in California, it has been implemented in other cities and been successful.
Yeah, I guess on top of the rest of the questions I wanna ask, is we've seen, or other places in California have seen this be successful. Have they? I mean, is that a true statement? And by success, I guess, how do you quantify success? Success would be reduction in, you know, landfill capacity, reduction, I don't know how you would, how they're, how they're gonna measure the reduction in methane.
Diversion rates.
Huh?
I think diversion rates is how, a lot of times, they measure how successful the program is, is how much is being diverted from the landfill.
Right, okay.
Remember, Councilman Blades, almost all of our landfills are lined, and they all have a way of capturing methane gas, so they do quantify how much methane comes out of our landfill currently.
I didn't know that.
Yes.
That's good. I got another silly question that you might be able to answer for me, and that is, we are seeing, I don't know if this is true or not, right? I'm not a biologist, but it would make sense to me that if you have the organics that are mixed in with the other trash, they're helping break down that trash. I don't know if that's a true statement, but I'm asking the question. And the second part of that question is, if that methane gas is already being produced at our landfill, and we're just taking that same compost to another place, there really isn't a reduction in emissions, is there?
That's not a silly question at all. It's actually very complex and might take a long time to get through, but in short form, in a landfill, it's not capturing all methane. There's pipes underneath that do, but there's a lot that's going out into the air, and a lot of these composting systems are uncovered, aerated, satir piles, so all that methane's contained. You have pipes in there that's doing its best to capture methane, but it's not capturing it all.
Right.
So you're, as it, it does increase the decomposition of those materials.
Okay.
And I think the goal is to sort of create a closed system where, rather than having those materials, whether, even though they break down relatively quickly, they're still releasing that gas, and I think the point is to capture it in a closed system where it's not an open system, and you're actually using those products for compost and stuff. I think that's the goal of the program.
And fuel, right? I saw that on the website.
And fuel, and that would be, and that would be great if we had the infrastructure to be able to do things like that. So right now, we're, that's why I said the procurement is a bit of an issue, because right now, we're looking at trying to meet our target through mainly compost or mulch. And as we all know, that we're actively trying to move away from landscaping and do more zerescaping and stuff, we're not a community that has a lot of need for compost necessarily. So if we could transfer to a way that we're getting that procurement through thermes or renewable fuels, that would really help us meet that goal a lot easier.
I would add, there's a very large shortage of California-produced renewable natural gas, so it's very hard to even get it on a spot market right now. And to inject in the pipeline in California has to be cleaner than anywhere else in America, so it costs more to generate it, and it has to be California-generated renewable natural gas.
Interesting, okay.
And it goes in the same pipeline, by the way, so it all gets handled.
Right on. Okay, thank you. So to keep me from talking all night, will some of you wanna chime in here? Because I think, I think the chief gets started hearing me talk sometimes.
I have a question. Going back to low organic waste producers, particularly commercial, so if you have an office who has minimal, they do just maybe have lunch, there's no waste, they shred or recycle paper products, are they going to be required to participate? I mean, earlier you mentioned if there was a small enough usage, 10 gallons, or, I mean, could you kind of go over that one more time? Because I wanna try to put this together as far as people that are producing minimal amounts, are they gonna be paying for this, and, or do they truly have a way to opt out of it?
In short, they do have a way to opt out of it. It's if you have less than two cubic yards of trash recycling and organics put together, then you have to have less than 10 gallons of organic waste. And the definition of organic waste includes paper and cardboard, so it would be very hard for a generator to have less than 10 gallons.
So the paper and cardboard are gonna be...
They count as organic waste. Even though they would be going in the recycling container and diverted, they do count as organic waste in that calculation.
So what if they shred the majority of the paper?
It still counts.
Still counts. And so, yeah, so what's the difference between the recycled paper and having, we're gonna, we have a can for, they would have to be required to have a can for recycling, right?
Correct.
And they're gonna have a small, little tiny bit of organics, or, you know, true organic. So there's still, how often, how often is that gonna be picked up? Would it be every...
The organics would be weekly, because it's putrescible, so even if you just throw a few little things of food in there, it's gonna start to smell and decompose quickly and attract things like rodents and bugs, so that has to be weekly. The recyclables is currently collected biweekly, that can continue. And we're exploring moving the trash to every other week as well, because if you take all the food and the stuff that decomposes quickly out of it, you're not gonna have any of that smelly decomposing stuff in there, so that would, that could be collected every other week, too.
Because I guess I'm not seeing the cost benefit, you know, in the return of, you know, these particular individuals are not going to be accruing or causing methane gas out of their paper. Paper doesn't cause methane gas, right?
If it, if it was mixed in with food and other things and decomposed, then yeah, it would, but if it's in a clean recycling system and went to a recycling facility, it would be unlikely.
Okay. Yeah.
I think, I think Scott, you're trying to find that out, and I don't think there's an out.
I see, no, but...
That's the truth.
And maybe there should be an out, because I see a lot of businesses that don't produce, you know, true organic waste, that are gonna have to be participating in this, that it's, to me, is not...
That's why the two weeks is the best option that we have to put forward, trying to find a solution, because I would suspect that many of the offices you're describing probably aren't being subscribed as commercial customers in a lot of ways, because they're mostly set up as individual office spaces, or if you have a building, you're still gonna have the grass clippings, the tree, the tree, the leaves, you're gonna have other stuff that makes up that organics total for that complex or that building, that if you owned a building, you had, let's say, four offices in it. That individual office may not be producing total organics, but it's part of a waste system for that entire building that is gonna meet that organics requirement. I don't think we're gonna dodge it. That's what I'm...
If you have a landscaper who takes it, that's what, then you don't, I mean, I know there's, you're not trying to dodge the problem, but you're trying to look at it in reality. And the reality is, if you have four buildings and all they're doing is eating lunch in there, and the organics are being taken away by the trees and the landscaper, where are you?
I see that as a way to offset the cost on, for the whole thing, by having them participate in it. Am I correct in that?
Having them participate in what, taking it all home, or to a...
No, I mean, the businesses or individuals that have minimal amount of waste, and say if it is carted off, or they just don't produce it, but they still have to participate in this, there's gonna be a cost incurred to them, and I don't see them as being, I don't think they should be required. I think there should be a more standardized and better opt-out, and, so I'm just trying to figure out where, you know, in the long run, are all these other people that produce minimal, they're gonna be part of this system and have to pay in offset the cost of the big picture?
Yes.
Yeah. There's obviously a scale of economy, but we can maybe get you some additional information on our small commercial generator waiver program that we'll have. There will be a program to waive organics for small businesses, and we can, you know, get that information out, or we can educate folks a little bit more of actually who would qualify or not. I know that we'll be working with Waste Management in getting that information out, and more likely visiting some of these businesses to make these determinations.
Okay. But, and just like Peggy, I know you, your property, you have multiple units inside your property. Each one of those units doesn't subscribe to trash. You subscribe as the property owner, correct? And that's kind of my point that I'm saying, is that you're gonna have, those three units are not going to have an impact, but the property owner will, because they've got to implement organics because of the total sum of the whole building. And that's why, that is, you're gonna have a lot of smaller businesses that miss it altogether, because they're not, either they don't have a total number of people, or they don't have service, because it's managed by the property owner in that process, and the property owner is gonna have a requirement to meet it because of the total, total yardage is, as you described it, what was it, two cubic yards?
Two cubic yards.
That, whatever, that total, that building is producing, as all units combined. Now, some may have a small enough that they can qualify for the waiver, and that's part of the process, but it's, at the end of the day, you know, we, at the end of the day, I'll say the politically bad thing to say, which is that SB 1383 is a state-mandated now trash requirement. If you were avoiding it before, it's no longer avoidable.
I would like to see a list, and that's what people have been asking me. A list of what goes where, what goes where, and what goes in the organics, because simply if all you do is put your stuff down the garbage disposal, as Kyle referred to, we don't have organics then anymore, because everything's going down the garbage disposal.
You do. You will still have an organics trash bin regardless.
And you will still pay for it. And we hurt our sewer system rather than solve the solution of...
Well, the truth is, you can't, there's not gonna be a waiver that says I put everything down the waste disposal. There's not gonna be a waiver that says I do it in my backyard. You're still gonna have a required service.
Well, and some of that won't go in there. That's what he was remarking earlier, is that there is some stuff that can go down the disposal, and some stuff don't, you know...
Bones.
You wouldn't put coffee grounds and eggshells down.
Or chicken bones.
And there are some cities that have explored large-scale, you know, maceration or putting it down the drain, and it's gonna strain your sewer systems. If you put all that acid and all this solids down there, that also increases the water flow you have to put through it, so older water systems can't handle that volume. And also, when there's a water shortage, it may not be the most prudent to use a lot of water trying to wash it all through.
And Peggy, to answer your question, we did put something out on social media a while back regarding the sorting requirements, what goes in what bin, so we'll touch again on that in our continued outreach as well, to make sure that's clear and easy for people to understand.
And it was also, that's why we're delaying the residential implementation. We have to wait until the franchise agreement's approved before we can go crazy with the education, because if it doesn't get approved or things change, then we're gonna have to re-educate people, which will lead to more confusion and less participation. So once the system's finalized and what goes where, then there'll be a six-month education campaign prior to these carts being delivered and relitied, so that way people have, hopefully, a great idea of where.
And it hasn't been mentioned, but there's obviously a supply chain problem with getting the carts here as well, so there's...
It may be longer, truthfully.
Right. There's probably some other obvious questions that I'm sure people are wondering. I don't know if it's, we're offsetting emissions by having trucks go up and down the road to pick up more waste?
Yeah. There's an environmental impact.
You aren't, you aren't, you know, the state of California. I'm not, I'm not...
No, I get that. And really, you'd have to do a VMT analysis and a waste characterization to figure out the generation profile and the decomposition, and what type of fuel you're using, where it's being transferred to. But the state did do an environmental impact report as a statewide, as to what the impact would be, prior to the finalization of this. So they concluded statewide that there was a benefit to this.
Sure, yeah, and I want everybody to know that we're asking all these, well, I'm asking all these questions because I think everybody needs to hear them, but I actually think that the spirit behind this is great. I just hate, this is my personal view, I hate when anybody tells me to do anything whatsoever. I remarked earlier, I've had a seatbelt ticket, and I abhor those, you know, the state coming in saying, well, I mean, because I'm inclined to say, well, I was gonna do it, now I'm not, because you told me to. So it's, that's not a healthy way to be, but it's, I get the feeling that a lot of other people in the community are gonna have some of that same sentiment, like, look, man, I was already doing the compost, now you, the state, are telling me to do something, and then now... The state was very crafty in having a branch of, you know, CalRecycle put all this stuff down to the municipalities, so it makes us look like the bad guy. I mean, brilliant work.
You bring up a good point on the shift for telling you what to do. Historically, under AB 939, you had to hit a 50% diversion target as a jurisdiction, and how you got there, there was a lot of avenues to that. When this Senate bill was written, it was statewide goals of 50% and 75%, and CalRecycle was tasked with hitting those goals. So the only way they could do that is through program standards, since the bill specifically states that they can't give you a percentage, and you figure it out.
Right, right. Thank you. I'll let everybody else go. I'll probably have more as we go along.
I think that brings up a good point, because basically, that's what I was getting at earlier, is that, you know, the cost effectiveness of, you know, going after, you know, the smaller organic producers. And so, and likewise, when you look at the, you know, the nation, or you look at the state as a whole, it seems like it makes better sense to go after the more accessible, where you're gonna get the biggest amounts and concentrations of the organic waste for the least cost of accruing it, and then doing something productive with it. And so with the city, you know, remote places and, you know, on a bigger scale, like looking at it from statewide perspective, does it make sense, you know, to be causing, you know, more, you know, exhaust, you know, fumes and burning gas and to get that waste managed?
Scott, are you asking for financial responsibility from the state of California and its legislative actions?
Well, no, it's common sense, I guess. I mean, because it doesn't make sense to spend a ton of money for a small net gain, is what I'm getting at.
That was the original intent of AB 1826.
Just like there's a waiver for, you know, or possibly a waiver, I haven't quite, you know, gotten that in a concrete sense yet, but, you know, just like there may be a waiver, you know, on a city scale to, you know, for the, for the low-waste producers, on a state scale, you know, it would make sense to have some type of waiver and, you know, and...
I believe they do have state-issued waivers for rural, high elevation.
Yep.
And I think I'm missing one.
Yeah, it's for rural communities, so you have to have less than 4,500 people. And if you're at county, then it's in census tracts that have less than 75 people per square mile.
And they don't take into consideration distance.
No, there's no consideration of that, unfortunately.
We tried.
Nice try, though.
Here lies the, you know, some of the issues I see, we know what we are forced to be able to, you know, to take on responsibly for, and the cost incurred with it, and the outcome, or, you know, the net gain of, you know, benefit from it. I don't see it.
At some point, I'd love us to have the, well, we may not have a discussion, but present how this has worked successfully in other municipalities, right? So this doesn't seem like such a foreign concept. I mean, a lot of people who have lived other places, if you lived...
LA's had four bins, I think LA's up to four bins now, or something like that.
I used to have an aunt that lived up in the Bay Area, and I remember, and this was years ago, I was a kid, and I remember her being adamant about how things were separated, and it was working then. I would just, wanna make sure that people know this is not new. It happens overseas, other countries, it's happening everywhere. It's, this isn't a, it's not a new concept. It is coming along, it's coming along what seems quickly, but you guys, staff, have been working on it for a long time.
I have been working on it since I started in May, and we still have a ways to go, but we're doing our best to get, to get there as painlessly as possible, and trying to exhaust all avenues, making sure we're working with CalRecycle, asking them the good questions, and asking them why we can't do this, why we can't do that. So that was, unfortunately, I was really hoping that de minimis waivers would be able to be applied to residents for the people who only have, you know, a couple banana peels. Unfortunately, that is not gonna fly.
So I hope we're keeping up the education even throughout, like as we see the, you know, the county work with CalRecycle, as we see things get implemented, we're working on our contracts, so people are understanding that, you know, we're stepping through the process, and we're trying to stay as much as data-driven as possible. So, and we will, I'm sure we will.
Megan, you probably use the best word that's been used all, all of tonight, which is as painlessly as possible.
That's the goal. We know it's a pain, we know people are frustrated, we're doing our best we can to make sure that we address all the concerns. And that's, again, with the LEA proposal, I know you guys mentioned, why is this gonna reduce emissions, there's gonna be more trucks on the road. If we can get that proposal passed, so we have biweekly collection of garbage with the weekly implementation of organics, hopefully that will sort of help reduce those concerns as well.
Thank you. In the sake of, we do have, obviously, a bunch of big stuff on the agenda tonight, so, uh, is there any other questions from the council, we can certainly, we'll have two other opportunities in discussion.
And we will be bringing the ordinance back at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll call it for now.
But, but we'll say this, first, uh, thank you, Councilman Blades, for, for asking a lot of the questions and, and getting them out on the record for everyone to be able to watch and to listen and to hear, and secondarily is, once again, to the public, if you didn't hear, uh, and you had a question, let us know, give us the opportunity to, to bring it forward as a question, the future one.
And I will say thank you to Kyle, I think he, um, definitely addressed a lot of the concerns that we're seeing in our social media feedback, um, from the citizens, so...
Well, well, I hope so, I wanna make, the people, their concerns are valid.
Yeah, 100%.
They are valid, and I, I gotta say, I had some of the same ones, we just need to make sure that we're conveying, well, I, I'm not saying we, but that people understand that, we understand, we're gonna step through every issue as much as we can, we're gonna, we're gonna be there along, this is a city implementation, this is a fix that we are trying to be a part of, make it a full, uh, city implementation. Are you gonna have people up to public comment?
Uh, not at this time, we have two, uh, regular items that would allow for any public comment.
Okay, all right.
Okay, uh, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda, we'll let Rick catch up for a second.
Oh, Riley's gotta catch us up back there.
Riley, you wanna catch us up? We're going to public comment of items not on the agenda, I just wanna make sure for, for the purposes of the screens, thank you very much, sir. Back, 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 okay. Close, two more? Yay! Okay, um, next item is public comment of items not on the agenda, persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council jurisdiction do not already appear on the agenda, may do so at this time pursuant to the Brown Act, council cannot take, may not, may not take action on the item that does not appear on the agenda, speakers are limited to five minutes, and the public comment section of the agenda is limited to one hour, each speaker is asked to provide his or her name, I do see we've got somebody on the floor, it's already up, so I'm gonna go ahead and go from the floor first, sir, come on forward.
Good evening, council, I'm, uh, Sean Connolly, wastewater operator for the city of Ridgecrest, I'm also the UFCW, uh, union steward, wanted to bring up and kind of reiterate, um, we have, uh, we're getting scheduling on our openers that were coming up here in January, you know, we're past that, we're looking, I think, the end of February, maybe early March, getting into those negotiations for the UFCW, uh, folks that work for the city, um, I just kinda wanna reiterate, you know, we've, we've said, or we've heard from you guys, like, a lot of things about moving forward and getting to where we need to be, small steps at a time, I think that with our retention rates and stuff like that, um, I know my department specifically, we've had pretty bad turnover, I think about five guys in the last two years, um, and for a department that has a lot of their senior loyal members with, you know, 15, you know, 20 years, 25 years of service, that'll be looking to retire in the next couple of years, retention is extremely important to bring guys in, get them licensed, get them trained to know not only the plant we currently operate, but the new plant that we hope to build in the near future, um, because I, I believe trying to attract outside operators is gonna be more expensive, more difficult than retaining the good guys that we have now, um, and I know that there is issues, you know, in the streets department and stuff like that with turnover as well, uh, we gotta, we gotta figure it out, you know, I don't know if the casino thing is, is gonna happen, we've kind of been, um, had that dangled in front of us for a while now, you know, hey, when the casino comes in, that'll kind of be the time, we'll see more funding and stuff, but, uh, we might have to get a little creative, uh, if that's not happening, 'cause I, I think, um, we will run into trouble in the next few years, where we're letting, you know, guys with skilled trades, guys with licenses that are not easy to acquire, they take not just knowledge, um, they take time in, you know, you have to have time and grade all the way through, um, you know, there's a lot of heavy equipment that the streets guys are running that takes know-how, you know, maybe one or two guys knows how to do that, and those one or two guys are gonna be looking to retire in the next five years, um, so, I just wanna kind of bring that up, you know, hopefully, uh, end of February, March, like I said, we'll be coming back to those, and, uh, anything you guys got, you know, Mr. Strand will be the guy, uh, speaking for you guys to us, so, I look forward to it.
Thanks, Sean, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. It appears we have another gentleman approaching the bench.
Hi, I'm Skip Gorman, a local resident here of Ridgecrest, and I don't know what inspired this, but I have a short story to tell, um, my daughter and her husband and our grandkids live in Germany, have been for last 12 or 15 years, and we get to go back there and visit their household in Bavaria, in a town about the size of Ridgecrest, and on a lark, I asked my daughter, could you take me to the local dump? I wanna compare it with what we've been dealing with here, when I first started writing for the local media, it was about the dump, I don't know why, I'm attracted to that dump. I think it just changed operators recently, uh, and the new operator has a lot to learn, thought I'd throw that in, a lot, but my daughter proudly took me to, uh, her local municipality dump, and I know this was talked about, and it's quote, "on the agenda," but it's bye, so is it still on the agenda?
Stories are not on the agenda.
Without being invited or anticipated, I ended up out, we walked from her house downhill to the local dump, I got the impression it was a municipal dump, not a regional dump, and it was totally different than I anticipated, it was run by, uh, six to eight to 12 uniformed personnel, that, um, after chatting with the local supervisor, uh, my daughter, uh, he understood why I was there and what I wanted to see, he lined them up, uniformed people proud of their facility, and introduced them all, and they told me which part of waste management they're all involved with, and showed me, and I was aghast, I asked a question that got them all laughing, though, I wanna see where you bury all this stuff, and the answer is, they bury nothing, that's the sign of a properly-run dump, they don't put any of it in the ground, it's all recycled, uh, and some of the recycling gets subdivided into other recycling, uh, it's amazing, it's clean, there is no smell, hokey smoke, methane, you gotta be kidding, uh, the metrics of what you're about is when we get down to nothing being buried, you'll be successful, the methane problem will have taken care of itself, along with a whole others, so the challenge is one of organization and management, and that's, that challenge rests on the shoulders of you guys who get paid all the money to do it. The, uh, change in the culture we see happening because, uh, water's becoming more dear out here, and people are consequently not having lawns, so what, as far as compostable recycling materials happening, what used to be grass cuttings, uh, will, will diminish, and what will grow is cardboard from Amazon. We go shopping, we're hip-deep in cardboard right now, and we have, um, here and there, I think, I only know of one of them, maybe there's more, a large dumpster with lots of signs, and, um, the inability of people to flatten their cardboard is unbelievable, um, it must be as hard to use, to learn to use turn signals as it is to flatten the cardboard you put in that machine, um, if only they would, we, we could fill it with cardboard, darn, I, oh, it's, that hypnotizing amber light, um, I'm thinking this, oh, as water becomes dear, you'll find you're faced with the quandary of what do you do with a slightly-soiled paper plate, it's happening, people aren't using their dishwasher as much, the saving water is a big deal, the big organization seems to be in, uh, each kitchen, that's where waste management starts, that's where the rubber meets the road, my daughter has five different colored waste containers in her kitchen, and, um, the decision she has to make as she's organizing her food after dinner is, uh, interesting, an engineering challenge altogether, uh, they enjoy it, the paradigm shift those people have gone through in Germany, um, they're the team that helps make it all work, i- it's different, we'll be dragged kicking and screaming halfway down this, and that's a shame, I support all this, I'll thank you and leave.
Thank you, Skip.
Yeah, good evening, Mike Neal, I'd like to start off by saying it's a pleasure to be in a mostly mask-free environment here, uh, even though, uh, Dr. Governor Newsom seems to think we all need to still wear them, apparently in Ridgecrest, we just kind of silently ignore that, which is, uh, good, it's fine with me, which I've been doing almost 100%. Next thing is, uh, does that have a question, which I had a lead-in from a prior speaker on this, and that is as to the casino land sale, that was, uh, expired, I believe, as of today, uh, what I, uh, probably at least half of the Ridgecrest public, maybe the whole Ridgecrest public would like to know is, is that the end of the land sale? Is it done? Are we gonna talk about letting them come back again later on, like we hardly did, uh, December, whatever it was, 2020, and get another one going? Got an answer for that, anybody?
No, I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm not aware of, I know that, uh, what we were hitting the date where it was gonna, the land sale deal was gonna expire, I think it expired the first, or today, today?
Expired today, I believe.
And then at that point, um, correct me, stop me anytime, Ron, if I'm speaking incorrectly.
I was gonna say, do you, Ron, the...
No, I don't, I don't, I don't mind answering, at least for the best of my knowledge, and if I'm wrong, that's okay, I don't, I don't mind being wrong, so I think that once the land is canceled, then it's gonna be back up for sale, and I don't see why, now this is something that probably needs to be said, that I don't see why that wouldn't, you know, somebody like, uh, the developer of the tribe couldn't come back in and try to buy it again, I mean, it's gonna be a piece of land for sale.
Right.
And hopefully I'm not, is that generally correct? Okay, and you don't have to add, I think that's generally the consensus.
Okay, so obviously that would obviate a, the whole new agreement, and a whole start over with the whole thing, because the old one is, which thing is done?
No, the MSA is, the MSA and the land sale are separate entities, so the MSA remains in force.
All right, yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanna know about that, okay, uh, the next point here, uh, is I wanna go back to the, uh, I believe November workshop that, that I sat through here, I think it was actually the last time I was here, uh, and we had a long talk about use of what's called, in some fashion, American Recovery Funds, something like that, basically, uh, supposedly and defined as quite pretty, I thought explicitly, uh, funds to help the economy recover from the effects of the, the quote-unquote COVID-China virus, uh, that, that discussion, as I recall, was centered completely around buying new police vehicles and either improving or adding to parks in Ridgecrest, I didn't see, remember, one single discussion about helping business people, business entities, recover from the effects of the China virus effects on them, I was, uh, reminded of what went on personally just the other night by a local dentist I'm acquainted with, who stated that, that he was out of business for nine weeks, I think he got off easy, uh, I think there are a lot of businesses in this town that were out of business for a lot longer than nine weeks, and you can imagine what they had to do and what their employees had to do, basically sit it on with no income, now, if you're planning on using all that money to build parks and improve parks, as far as I'm concerned, and I believe all the rest of them will be concerned, is you are not doing justice to your citizens, that money is supposed to provide economic recovery.
Well, so...
Think about it, don't let your lawyers drive your brain cells on this one, and work around the details and the lawyer wording of the laws and the regulations, do you wanna help your local citizens and your businesses that suffered severely from this with this money, that's the point.
Well, of, of course we do, Mike, I just wanna say, since I know that you kinda always want feedback, and we're not supposed to have too much conversation...
Take me off the clock while he's talking, would you please?
But I don't mind saying, I don't mind saying back to you, I can't imagine a case as to you, that where the city council wouldn't want to help out any businesses, like, I know several business owners, personally, we all do, personally affected, that, uh, hair salons come to mind, the biggest people that I think took it the hardest, I felt the worst for them, uh, they, they took it real hard, so of course we would want to, all those conversations were had almost right out the bat, what can we do, how do we help, and, uh, the state of California has it tied up with colors of money, we could only spend that money in certain ways, and so we're just trying to make the best use of that money, is that a misstatement, Mr. Strand? Because I, I think we had the, we've had conversations, uh, with what can we do with the money, and I think that we're trying to stay, I'm not trying to say we are, we are hamstringed, I mean, that's not the only thing that we can't spend the money on, so I, I don't even ask.
There was a significant money that was already out there that's been distributed for businesses, and I know a lot of businesses, um, applied for and received forgivable loans, so those were there, I mean, I think, I think there was...
It didn't help everybody, 'cause some people didn't qualify for them, so anyways...
But then he did the second time around, because there were two rounds, it's important to understand that how PPP worked, and, and, and I can tell, between two people here, I can tell you where's probably four to 500 different businesses that were, were supported in our community in both rounds of those loans, and the second round addressed the hairdressers and the people that weren't, didn't have the qualifying criteria the first time around, and I can know, I can say, in my, in my small, very small business loan, I pumped out more than $9 million into the community, okay, in those two processes.
Right.
So, I mean...
I also think there's a problem, I mean, right now, most every industry out there's having a hard time finding people working, and I think a good portion of that is because the government's giving those people money to stay home, so when you look at, I don't think we can just provide cash to somebody who said that they normally would make $4,000 a month and just give them cash and say you're good to go.
Well, what I, what I would like to say, Ron, sorry to interrupt you, is, is as a, as a council member, I would love to say that we could have used that money, set up, uh, like, grants for businesses that were impacted, and, and I, and I wanna say that in some way, shape, or form, we all had, uh, that conversation with the staff, is this something that can be done? We were told pretty early on, look, you got XYZ ways to spend this money, and you guys gotta go figure that out, and so, that's, that was the purpose of the workshop that you sat through, so, I'm sorry, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, so...
That's fine.
Go ahead.
I, I appreciate the interchange, I usually just get to speak and then get sent to my seat, uh, I still am gonna maintain that, say, out of $6 million that you have available to use, that I, I would seriously think that you could find some avenues to spend at least 25% of that, and finding businesses and individuals that were honestly impacted, seriously, I mean, we all know, most everybody in town knows that Casey's almost went out of business, they were out of business for a while, and then somehow they managed to bounce back, come back, reopen, well, there, and I don't recall the other one, but there was at least one other restaurant went out of business, now, they were impacted, and they may be out of town and, and unhelpable, I don't know, but if you don't make some serious effort to go ahead and, and not just pass it off with, well, they got loans and blah, 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 and so forth, you know, give them some help, then these people, they've lost hope, they're gonna leave town, they're gonna leave the state, which I don't blame them whatsoever, there's lots of reasons to leave California these days, we just listened to one of them, but, being it all in parks and police cars, doesn't look good, and just be on notice that I felt like I needed to go ahead and report this to the inspector general's office of the Department of the Treasury, sent them the links to the workshops, sent them the agenda for that night, told them that I think that the funds are largely looking at being misused, and kinda hate to have to do that, but, you know, there's people who need the money a lot more than seeing better parks in this town.
Well, Mike, you should do that, you should do that, and we'll tell, they'll give you the same answer that we gave you.
I also wanna say something here, Mike, is I think it's inappropriate for us to try to say that businesses who have been, were impacted by COVID and all the implications thereof are the responsibility of the city, what it is, the responsibility of the city is to provide a good business atmosphere for people in this community, and the worst thing that's impacting businesses here today is a lack of be able to find employees, I know some people have just given up advertising for help because they can't find them, people are being paid... are being paid to sit at home, and we need workers, well-paid workers, and we are doing that. And I know people that were paying minimum wage are now up to $25 an hour, just trying to find people to work. We need workers. We need them now. And there is nothing the city can do to do that, to make it any better than just trying to find good workers. And that is not our responsibility.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any other public comment from the floor? Hearing none. Do we have any callers on the phone? Caller, state your name. Riley, I don't know what the flashing lights over and over means.
I think it means they hung up.
Means they hung up, means we have no calls. Okay. I'll give it just a quick second to see if that person wants to try to call back in. Does not appear so. Okay. We will go ahead and move on from public comment to council announcements. I have one council announcement. Does anybody else have any?
None.
No, I'm not. I'll let you do EOC since you're-
Just want to make an announcement about Economic Outlook Conference on the 24th of this month. So Mayor will be speaking. There are a couple of other speakers. And then Dr. Mark Schnee, who spoke last couple of years, he's coming back, he's going to give updates. So that would be an interesting event. Thank you.
Sir, Kyle, you got anything?
Nope.
Okay. So I have one brief one, and I'm only reading it because I want to make sure that it matches what I posted online, which already has, went out. But I want to take a brief moment and advise the community about the progress and next steps in our community conversation. This evening, we'll be considering the most important issue that started this conversation process, which is fire protection. The city staff and council have been discussing this issue for well over a year, and we must now face the challenges of solving a 542% increase in costs over the next six years. Following this meeting, residents will be receiving the first of our Ridge Report in their mailbox with a request to participate in the community conversation. Our hope is that our commitment to improving communication with the citizens will be reflected in the next series of responses. To help us in this process, we are asking citizens to complete the brief survey either through the mail and tear-off or online through the survey link on the city website. Getting your involvement and communication is critically important in ensuring that we present a solution that our community supports. Thank you for taking a moment to complete the survey and in helping us solve this serious challenge of public safety. That was all. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that that was coming in their mailbox and how they can help us. Thank you. Okay, next item is our consent calendar. All items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved in one motion. If no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions, if comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. There is one item on our consent calendar. It's the proposed action to approve draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council regular meeting dated January 19, 2022. Do any members of the council wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none, does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda as presented?
So, more.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We are unfortunately gonna need to go to roll call vote the rest of the evening.
Okay.
So Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rottenham?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Ms. Breeden?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay. I want to talk a regular discussion of action items for this evening. The first item is item number five. This is a proposed action to approve a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council authorizing submittal of notice of intent to comply for the NOIC to CalRecycle under SB 619. Megan.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna step in the back, grab some water.
Absolutely.
Okay, so as, excuse me, as Phil talked about, this is a notice of intent to comply with CalRecycle notifying them of our violations under SB 1383 requirements, and with an action plan and timeline for how we're going to correct those violations. So I don't have my staff report with me, sorry. Okay.
I can give you one too, if you-
So under SB 1383, as Phil mentioned earlier, jurisdictions are required to start implementing it beginning January 1, 2022. So many local governments are facing challenges meeting that deadline due to COVID and other mitigating factors. So in response, Governor Newsom signed SB 619 into law to support local governments as they design and implement the successful organic waste recycling programs in the state. So this law authorizes CalRecycle to waive the civic, civil penalties if the jurisdiction submits the notification of intent to comply for some or all of the regulatory requirements and successfully implements a plan to correct their violations. So again, that'll provide relief for civil penalties incurred under calendar year 2022. But we will be provided, we will be providing CalRecycle reasons for why we will be out of compliance, as well as the action items we'll take to come into compliance and the timeline. So for our justification, there are delays in the franchise agreement negotiations pending that LEA approval for their collection frequency proposal. We also need additional time for procurement and rollout of the containers and lids. And there are COVID-19 impacts regarding the supply chain issues and labor shortages with waste management. So that was our justification for why we need to apply for the NOIC. Some key action items and timeline, we need to adopt the, or submit the NOIC and approve a resolution by March 1, 2022, which is why we are putting this on the agenda for tonight. We will have the ordinance. We are anticipating completion by June of 2022. The franchise agreement, we're anticipating to be completed by August 2022. And we're gonna be performing education and outreach as an ongoing effort from basically the entirety of this, this year, from January to January, essentially. We're looking at rolling out the carts and implementing the collection system in January of '23 for residents, a little bit, but sooner than that for commercial. And CalRecycle will not approve a notice of intent to comply unless it is submitted with written evidence that the NOIC has been duly adopted by the local governing body. So that is what this resolution is for. So again, if the local jurisdiction fails to adhere to the proposed actions and schedule described in the notification, CalRecycle may revoke its approval and impose administrative penalties for the violations. And it should be noted that in the NOIC, which is included in this, in the packet, the council packet, the dates that we put in there were intentionally sort of stretched, I guess you could say. So we gave ourselves plenty of room to implement them in time. So we expect a lot of these things are gonna be completed a bit in advance of the dates listed on the NOIC. But again, that was just to make sure that we have plenty of time to meet those deadlines, so we don't get penalized by the CalRecycle. So in your exhibits, there's the actual application for the NOIC, as well as supplemental timeline and proposed action for the corrective action plan. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them as best I can. Ron, did you want to add anything?
I just have one question. Actually, regarding SB 1383, I should have asked earlier. So for implementing that, do we need to change our municipal code? Do you know?
Yes, we will be bringing municipal code updates to the next council meeting for the first reading of the ordinance, and then we'll be bringing it back again for approval.
So your time schedule would be sufficient for implementing that?
Yes. And then the next item, which is the grant application, I'll get a little bit more into why we are bringing the ordinance in this next month. And that has to do with the deadline for the grant application, which I'll get into in the next item.
Okay, thanks, Megan.
You're welcome.
Megan, I read through this thing in its entirety, and it's a lot of work.
It is. And thank you again to Phil and HF and H for helping us put that together. So we did submit it, the due date to submit the notice was February 1, so that has already been submitted. Now we just need the resolution to be able to go ahead with the process.
No, this particular, I think the NOIC is a, it's a function of, of the, what we have to do, so.
Any other comments?
The only thing I was gonna ask, I think I, I think I meant to ask you this before, and that is, you, you talked about a corrective action plan. Maybe put on a corrective action plan. Is this our corrective action plan? You know, when we, when we notify? Feel free to come up if you, if you want.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and let Phil take this. From what I understand, this notice of intent to comply basically takes the place of what CalRecycle would give us if they were to notify us of our violations. They would give, issue us a corrective active plan. So this is basically us taking the initiative, from what I understand. But I'll let Phil go ahead and add.
Sorry. Under the typical, I guess, compliance process, CalRecycle would issue a corrective action plan to you, or they would tell you how you're going to comply. Under this, we're allowed to file an application, and they will take that application, and that will become our corrective action plan. So this gives us, basically puts us in the driver's seat to provide our favorite approach, versus we wouldn't have that leeway to give our input if it was under corrective action plan process. But there are technically both, this will be a corrective action plan when they adopt it.
Gotcha.
Right, if they approve it.
Give them a plan, or they'll tell you how to do it.
Well, what I was gonna say is kudos, kudos to the staff for taking the initiative. I appreciate you getting on it, being on the ball. Thank you, Phil.
Any other council comments? Okay, any comments from the public?
Okay. Mike Neal, again, listening to the, the presentation, which actually turned into a discussion and should have been publicly commented aloud, but I'll, I'll touch on some of those things right here. Some things that jumped out that seemed to be fairly obvious and haven't put the hours in that some of you guys have, but just noted in, in small print on one of the last slides, let me see what my notes said here, sorry, said that basically you got to achieve 75% organics recycling. Now, just take it briefly back to 2008, when we had the big fight over mandatory recycling. The big fight was the city all of a sudden decided they would make what was a totally voluntary system, a city law, and you had to have trash service, had to pay for both, you know, trash and recycling. And people, lots of people did not want to do that and did not comply. And lo and behold, the state popped up and said, gee, most of your recycling is generated by your businesses, so I guess the private citizens don't have to have it. So if we don't want it, we don't have to have it. It's supposedly provided along with the trash service. If we have trash service, we don't even have to have that. And I believe, unless you change the law, that if people really don't like the green agenda recycling thing with three cans and five cans in their kitchen, whatever it ends up being, they can just say, I don't need trash service. Now, some will, and some won't. But I'm gonna venture and, and you know, maybe you can correct me, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna estimate that most of the organics generated in this town is a similar thing. It's generated by the grocery stores, it's generated mostly, you know, to a large extent. Obviously, there's organics coming out of restaurants. And in a more concentrated fashion, I guess, per address, you know, the apartment complexes, to get a lot of people living and dumping their stuff into one container. Now, single family, you're 2.4 people per household or whatever, and you well know a lot of households in this town, less people, you know, one-person households, for them to generate this, even, even though the deck appeared to me to be stacked where you want to lump in, recycles with organics and say, you got a total of that, you gotta have organics. It's not a lot of real organics comes out of my house. And I venture to guess that that's the same story for most of the residences in Ridgecrest. It's just not a lot of organics goes into the trash can. You know, recyclables, you know, if they're getting it in there, maybe. I don't even, a lot of times, my recyclable container is not even half full. So if you want to do justice by your citizens and not force them to have to pay extra for something they really are not gonna need, and it's gonna be kind of a pain in the butt in the summer, when that stuff's gonna be rotting in two days and sneaking big time before it gets picked up, even though there's only a little in there, is offer waivers to individual residences. And people may have to go to the trouble, and you may have to go to the trouble to go, oh, here, let me look at your application, you know. And sure, if a guy's got like eight people in his house, he's probably generating a significant amount of organics. But two people, what I'm saying here makes sense? How much organics is estimated currently? There's gotta be numbers with this. As, how much does a two-person household generate in a week's time?
I don't know. Like, Mike, I mean, for the sake of conversation, sorry if you pause it. Yeah, like in my house, I have two, I guess it's 2.4, I got a small kid. So it's just me, myself, my wife, my kid. We generate an amazing amount of organics. I don't know if it's just the food we're eating or how we're doing it. And I guess part of that goes into the, all right, paper's gonna be a part of that, clippings, you know, I also am doing yard work around my, around my house. And then I could see, I could see that organics can filling up pretty quick, especially if the trash, I mean, you're, you're not, not as much as going into that trash can anymore. I'm not trying to convince you of anything. I guess I'm just saying maybe my experience is a little different. I don't see-
Everybody's different.
Huh?
We're all different.
Well, we are all different. Every area, we actually talked about that earlier. Even every municipality is different. So we, we know that everything's different everywhere, but since we were presented with something, you know, a situation to fix, we're trying to make the best of it.
Right.
You know, on, on the city level. We're trying to do our level best to make this not just palatable for everybody, to make sure that everybody understands that we're not just, we, I guess, we, the state even, aren't doing something asinine. There is a, there is a means to an end. It appears like there, there is a solution, and we're trying to be a part of that solution.
Okay, well, what I suggest is that you're, you're letting your train of thinking be driven by what the state's demanding, instead of thinking it over and coming back to the state and saying, look, we're here to do justice by our citizens, and this doesn't look right for our people. Here's what looks right for our people. You know, organics recycling for the major organics producers, and not throw it onto the backs of every little, you know, 2.4-person household, and talk to the state and say, you know, we don't think we should be doing this. And, and, you know, maybe we, we're gonna take the avenue of giving these guys waivers. So like you said, you already said it yourself, I didn't say it, you know, people fixed income. Oh, golly gee, they're not only paying for this, they're already paying for a severely bumped up property tax increase for the landfill fee. It went way up, and it's directly related to this. County's saying, oh, wow, we gotta spend a bunch of money doing whatever they're gonna claim they're doing, which doesn't sound like they're gonna be, you know, doing only one facility doing the methane generation. And we gotta charge you a whole bunch. I forget the actual numbers, but I think it went up way over twice as much.
Yeah, we, so we addressed, you know, I asked the question a lot, quite a bit. I've asked the staff, I've asked Megan, you know, are we working on making sure we have some kind of a waiver? Are we looking into that? She's looking into every single option there could possibly be. A lot of the times, the states, you know, CalRecycle has said, nope, you know, the answer's no. It doesn't mean we're gonna quit asking and quit looking because we know this isn't done. This is, at least from what I understand, and you can stop me any time, this is morphing a little bit as we go. The counties are dealing with CalRecycle. This isn't just in cement. The only thing that we know that's in cement is each municipality has to come into compliance. We have to start offering, and it has to be a thing. We don't, that's the thing, that's the one point where I have to say, yep, in 2016, when this was signed into, we had people voted, I think Shannon Grove actually voted against this. But the rest of representatives didn't, so.
I'm giving you something to think about. Apparently, you have at least a year, so you got time to, you know, ruminate over this, give it consideration. But, but, you know, I'm, I'm asking you, keep in mind the best thing for, for your citizens, for the people who live in Ridgecrest, and not have people impacted. You know, they're not gonna be happy at all if you just say, everybody's gotta have organics recycling. Okay. And they're gonna get charged more for it, there's no doubt. And then they're gonna try to do it, and they're gonna look at that can, you know, and they go, there's a little, I think, was the number 10 gallons that I heard previously? It, you don't have to have, do this if you're not gonna over 10 gallons?
I think it was a two, and that was like, that was for businesses.
For commercials.
It was commercial, so that was a two, two figure.
That was one of the first things I asked to CalRecycle was whether residence would be applicable for the de minimis waivers. And unfortunately, that is not an appropriate use of those waivers.
Basically, just wanna force it on us. It doesn't matter if we have two ounces of organics, that we, they're gonna try to make us have it. And that's where we're at, that's what we're talking about. Forced compliance to something that makes no sense. And, you know, people are gonna be, you're gonna hear it, you're gonna hear it from them big time.
We are. And I'm already hearing it, Mike. And I'm already hearing it from a lot of people. And that's why I'm trying to step through this, so everybody understands the process. Because I think that's most of it. I think if we were presented, and I'm going on a limb here, this- I think if we were presented, and I'm going on a limb here, this is where I am making some assumptions, and I'm guessing here, I would say it would cost a whole lot more if we kept on filling up a dump and had to do another dump.
If you did, if you did.
That would cost a whole lot more money. I think that would cost the citizens a whole lot more money. And I think that there's not very many other solutions that offer us this kind of a chance to reduce amount of waste. So do I, in principle, believe with what's happening? I actually do, and maybe I am in the minority here, but I actually believe in it. Do I believe in forced compliance? No, I'm not one of those types of people. But since it's here, I guess we're just gonna have to try to make the best of it, Mike.
I'll just leave it, I say, engineering, good engineering dictates a stepwise repurchase. You start with the worst part of the problem, and you address that, and then you see where you got to. And then you go down to the next worst part. Well, I've already delineated what's the worst contributors here, and it's not the residences. And, you know, instead of starting with just broad brush, hit everybody, you know, mandate, gotta have organics recycling, you could do it a better way, and you might easily find that, you know, you didn't need to go there. You just simply don't need to go there, and you might benefit other cities in the state by proving that this, you know, mandated residential organics recycling is not necessary, and have feedback. You know, you never know what's, you know, how that's gonna play out, because California, obviously, is totally sold to forcing everybody into this. But just want you to think about it.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there any other council discussion? No? Okay. Do I have a motion for approval of the proposed action to approve a resolution?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
I know, I just noticed that it popped up, I don't know if the later ones are working.
Use it, use it or don't use it?
Go ahead, sir. While you guys are voting, I will take the time to let you know that the phone system just went down. So unfortunately, we will not be able to have comment, call-ins the rest of the evening.
Okay.
So, Mr. Hayman. Hey, five ayes, motion carries.
Do we have to? Do we have to pause?
We did not, because our chambers are open. So if there is somebody who is unable to call in, our chambers are open, the public meeting is still in force. Unfortunately, the, I guess, the phone system is down at this time.
Can people still view online, view YouTube?
Oh, yeah, YouTube's still up, it's just when that loud noise happened, something happened back there with the phone, and it went out.
Yeah, the YouTube channel's still up, and-
Just the calling.
I guess if anybody has anything, you can give one of us a call or something.
Yeah, they text either one of us, we'll be happy to raise the question if it's relevant. Next item on our agenda is item number six. This is a proposed action to approve a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council, authorizing submittal of application for CalRecycle Senate Bill 1383, Local Assistance Grant Program. Megan?
Okay, so this is a local assistance grant program offered by CalRecycle. It is a non-competitive grant pursuant to Chapter 395 statutes of 2016. The program will provide one-time funding to local jurisdictions to assist with the implementation of regulation requirements associated with SB 1383. The funding will be awarded in two rounds, with the first round of funding reserved for applicants who certify that an enforceable ordinance will be submitted by April 1st, 2022 to CalRecycle, and will have an approved resolution submitted by March 1st, 2022. So, to qualify for the first round, there's a timeline in the staff report below, and anybody who qualifies for first-round funding will also be eligible to receive additional remaining funds, as Phil mentioned during the presentation, not all jurisdictions may get their notice of intent or their application for the grant in in time, so there might be additional funds that we may be eligible for if we are able to get the first round of funding. So to qualify for that first round, we would need to submit the application by February 1st, which I have already submitted the application. Now we just need to have an approved resolution in by March 1st, 2022, which is what this item is regarding. And then we will hear back the grants awarded by April 1st, 2022, and that grant term will extend until April 2nd of 2024. So in order for a jurisdiction to be eligible to receive the funding, we must, the governing body must declare by resolution certain authorizations related to the administration of the payment and grant program. So this resolution authorizes the city to submit an application for CalRecycle payment programs, and authorizes the city manager to execute all related documents on behalf of the city for a period of five years. And according to the Notice of Funding Availability page that was provided by CalRecycle, the city is estimated to receive just under $40,000, 39,832 of the $59 million that have been allocated for this grant cycle. So the city is intending to utilize this funding to assist with the design, production, and marketing of materials and supplies for education and outreach supplements. Any questions?
Yeah, quick question. What else can you use the money for? Is it just education, is that the intent?
No, the money is pretty comprehen, you can use the money for quite a lot of different things. So we had discussed in the city org committee meeting, the grant itself, and the direction we were given was to put that money into education and outreach efforts, to bolster those efforts.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, that's exactly where they should be spent.
Yeah, we could spend it on consulting services, staff time. But we elected with the concurrence of the city org committee to pursue the public outreach. Obviously, even though we've been, you know, doing a lot of Facebook posts, there's been articles in the paper, we really need to continue to work on our public outreach, especially since we're gonna have a good, solid six months to roll this program out. And so I think the more robust we can be at that, the better. We're also looking at, part of this is maybe handing out some organic plastic bags. You know, one of the issues that came up through this whole process was kind of the yuck factor of having a pail underneath your sink that had your food scraps, and what would that do? So part of that is maybe getting with the local community and kind of encouraging, you know, the use of those organic bags for that purpose. So it's more of how we can make this roll out as smooth as possible under the circumstances.
Sure. Thank you.
Just from city org, the idea that came up was, you know, hey, set up at Santa Zarp shop or something as we get closer and closer to the deadline, and have a very, very, very large quantity of compostable bags to explain to people what you need and why you need, and be able to try and do that outreach from that perspective. I, just as a separate note that city org also asked, and it was confirmed, we making sure that our local merchandisers also have those bags in stock and available as we get closer and closer.
Yeah, we did send out a letter to all of our major retailers requesting that they start stocking compostable bags, so because we imagine the demand is going to go up as this is implemented. Another, just a personal idea I had for other, just because this isn't specific to any, we have some flexibility in how we do the outreach, I know the compostable bag giveaways are a great idea. I think it might be a cool idea to have like magnets or something that has the sorting requirements, just to make it easy, so when people are cleaning out their fridge, they know what goes where. So we're gonna be, we don't have anything concrete yet, but we're gonna be kind of working as a staff and with council to develop these measures, and find out what the community, what their needs are, what do they want to know, how can we get the word out, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. If we could maybe have the, like, the chief of police or the public works director make a video or something that-
They haven't made their premiere on TikTok yet, so it's coming.
Cool, thank you. All right, no further questions.
Quick question, Megan, maybe I missed it in your presentation. Is this a one-time grant, or it's an ongoing one?
This is a one-time funding, so it will be awarded in two cycles, but as far as I am aware, this is just a one-time available funding.
Okay. But you said somewhere here that this authorization, adoption through February 2nd, 2027, what does that mean? Maximum of five years?
So that just means that, wait, I'm sorry, were you saying that?
That's a blanket resolution that allows Mr. Strand to apply for CalRecycle grants up through 2027.
Sounds good, thank you.
And that's why in the title, there's a little bit of flexibility. It says for all CalRecycle grant and payments for which the city of Ridgecrest is eligible. So again, that'll be a blanket, it won't just apply to this specific one, but any that CalRecycle is offering.
And like she said, there could be this excess after the first round, and they might open that to be second round, and we don't have to go back through the process again.
Right, and the reason we wanted to be on that first round of funding is so if there is additional funding, we'll be eligible to receive, you know, any that wasn't claimed in those initial rounds.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other council questions?
I just had a, I wasn't sure how the 40,000 was determined, our, how much we got based on 59 million. Is there, was it based on population?
I believe it was based on population, and Phil, you can jump in here if you have somewhere.
Correct, that's the estimate based on population.
A little bit out of 59 million.
That's the estimate based on population, but that's assuming that every jurisdiction within the state in every, covering every person actually applies, where we know there's a lot of municipalities that couldn't get through in time. Just if you're a JPA, then each member agency would have to pass it at their council, they don't have to go to the JPA level. And if you're doing virtual meetings, you'd have to notice that meeting. So within a 45, 60-day period, it's not feasible for a lot of people statewide to get through that process by March 1st.
If you ever wanted a perspective on our size relative to the state, there it is.
That's, it almost, it felt like a slap in the face to me.
You need perspective there.
I know, I understand.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay. We'll take it out, any comments or questions from the count, from the public?
That's Mike Neal. I listened to what's been talked about, one thing I did not hear, and that was suggesting that you sent out a mailer to all your citizens, notifying them of what's coming their way. It's not hard to do, all it costs is the printing and the postage, and if you do it, you know, please do it so that people don't think it's another solicitation of some kind, throw it in the trash, put, you know, important city information on the header page that they see, or something like that. This is really the only way that you have to send notice and know that everybody in Ridgecrest is informed about it. All this other stuff, people at a particular event are gonna see, you know, the stuff, they're gonna see the little bags, or, you know, whatever, but the only way you can say, we truly did our best to make sure everybody was informed, is to mail a piece of literature to their house, and let them know about it.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
And I will say, I think we did have planned to do that as well, so thank you for that.
Well, yeah, it's true, you guys discussing how to do it at city org, and what it's gonna look like, so on and so forth. Maybe you can put your magnets in there.
As part of our-
Maybe we'll put the magnets in the mailer.
If you have a flat magnet on there, it would be very easy, and a mailer?
Yeah.
You should put a flat magnet on a mailer, easy. And that's a great idea.
Yeah, that's definitely, we would love any more of these ideas. And it's something you can stick on your fridge, have it as a constant reminder of what goes where. Yeah, I think that's a great idea, thank you.
Yeah, is, is part of our agreement with-
I didn't say it was gonna work, I just said it's a great idea.
As part of our agreement with the waste management, they also have a responsibility to notify the community of the waste management of the 1383. So we will be going above and beyond that. So the intent of staff was to do mailers with this money, and be able to get that information out as much as we possibly can.
Can I ask, it's loosely related to this money, this education, and I just wanted to ask, have you had to do, is this the first time that you guys, Waste Management's, had to implement SB 1383? Are you working with other municipalities, and maybe you're not aware of what all they're doing, and how they're doing, how you're having to outreach in those other areas?
Yeah, we're working with approximately 80 or 90 different jurisdictions in Southern California. I can't speak for my counterparts in Northern California, but I know what we're working on. This is, and that is probably something that everybody in the state of California, we're all in the same boat. So every jurisdiction is going through this same process, and I will say that what Ridgecrest is undertaking is what I see as the most appropriate route, that they are designing a program that is designed for Ridgecrest. CalRecycle has many generic tools that are available, and you can certainly just take them and fill in the city name and implement those. But I do love the fact that you've brought on, Phil, with HFNH, you have city staff that's really got knee-deep or deeper into this at this point, and designing a program that is specific to Ridgecrest. But yes, we are, as a holler to many jurisdictions in Southern California, working with essentially all of them for the same process.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Any final council comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval of the proposed action to approve a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second?
Please vote. Yes, there we go.
Five ayes, five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next item, thank you, guys.
Thanks, man.
Are you coming down here, or are you staying up there? Okay, sir. Doing my Mr. Miyagi. Okay. Item number seven, a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Ridgecrest and the county of Kern to provide fire protection services within the city of Ridgecrest. I want to, before I turn it over to city manager Strand, I want to just show something to the public real quick, and just make sure that everyone kind of understands as we go into this. City manager, and our staff has worked diligently, we've had materials that we've been reading and been provided for months in advance of this conversation. This has been one of those three primary concerns that we've put on our agendas, and this is the culmination of that in terms of information for the public. And although we may not ask 1,000 questions at the same time, I can just assure you that this entire council has been actively working on this issue now for the past year, and this is the kind of culminating moment, so. Mr. Strand?
Real quick, since people can't call in, and I know not everybody has my cell phone number, if you're watching, it's 719-235-8847, if you need to call in.
Yeah, if I take mine off silent, mine's 760-977-7090.
Okay.
And I just took it off silent, so.
Yep, I'm on.
Okay. Wrong direction.
Oh, wrong way, there you go, I'm gonna go back to trash.
That the city actually began to augment the fire fund. Now, one of the reasons why the fire fund is short is for a couple reasons. One, the loss of oil revenues over the years, as well as increase in, you know, operating costs for the fire department. In the study that we had with our consultant, CityGate, who specializes in fire studies, the typical county-city fire department normally takes in about 16, 17% of the property tax for their fire fund. Currently, right now, Kern County's at 9 or 10%. So right now, they're in a structural deficit. And of course, this new contract's gonna, you know, require us to pay a substantial amount more, and even with us paying more, it's still not gonna solve the county's fire fund structural deficit. So for the next 15 years, we augmented the fire fund. There was a time we were paying as much as 500, but then after the dissolution of the RDA, and the fire fund started receiving its full increment, that cost went down to about a quarter million a year. And I think this year, we were paying, augmented it by about 274,000. So in 2018, the county hired the Center for Public Safety Management to provide a comprehensive operational and administrative analysis of the fire department. And one of the key findings in that report was that in the review, the contract cities were not paying their actual cost for use for fire service. And they estimated that all the cities together were only paying about 48% of what it was actually costing Kern County Fire to provide services within our jurisdiction. So the Kern County Administrative Office in 2019 retained the services of the Nattleson Dale Group, Inc., which is TNDG. And they conducted a study to establish a new methodology to be able to recover the full cost allocation for fire services to the contract cities. And so through that process, they established what they came to use as their metrics as the call for service. In other words, the percentage would be based upon what percentage of calls for service that were handled within the city versus outside in the county area. for service that were handled within the city versus outside in the county area. And so in looking at that, you can see that our new cost for fire fund services is going to go from two hundred and seventy-four thousand a year to one point four million a year, and it's going to be phased in over six years. That's about another one point two million dollar hit to the general fund. An increase of about five hundred and forty-two percent. So when the contract cities, you know, learned of, of the new Nattleson Dale Group study, we asked the county for time to take a look at the study and to hire our own consultant to take a look at how that survey was, or how that cost allocation methodology was developed as well as how the county was providing, you know, services to the cities. Now up on the slide, or in front of you, this is kind of how the, the methodology is worked out. You can see they went off of the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen numbers. It shows for the city of Ridgecrest, we had a total of twenty-four hundred calls, ninety point five three percent were within the city, and nine point four seven percent were within the county area. So what the, the county elected to do for a few of the departments because of our strategic location, they gave us a, a strategic location bonus. So it put us at, at fifteen percent. So then our cost allocation factor was, you know, twenty-four point four seven percent. So we are responsible for seventy-six percent of the actual costs. So when we hired our consultant to take a look at this, we asked him if they're, you know, to want to look at the methodology, see if there's other ways of doing it. And, and in going through and looking at all the numbers, there was no real one way of, of doing this for all the contract cities.
Good, I just interrupted. I just want to let everyone know that we do, did get YouTube back up and running. We do not have phones. So we'll be still taking public comment. If there's anybody out there who's catching in on the YouTube, we cannot have you call in, but we will welcome you at council chambers if you have any public comment or questions. Sorry, go ahead.
So you can see that when they did their, their cost breakdown, now you're looking at, with that, that base discount factor, it was nine point four percent for the county calls, then an extra fifteen percent for a strategic fifteen percent discount. So that took twenty-four point four seven percent off the hundred percent cost for the fire service in our area. So as you can see at the top line, this is what we currently have paid during the last agreement. It started off at two hundred and fifty-two thousand. There was a two point one percent cost allocation increase, or, or COLA increase in that. So this last year, we paid two hundred and seventy-four thousand. So if you look at the next column, you can show the direct cost of our fire services is four point six million. With the two point seven percent escalation over six years, it's four point seven, minus the discount factor, minus our, our fire fund tax revenue, which currently is two point one million, puts our augmented cost at one point four million. And the bottom column shows what our next, what our augmented payments would be over the next six years. Next year will be four hundred and fifteen thousand escalating to one point four million in FY twenty-eight with a total increase of one point two million. So when we had CityGate review this study, there really was no one perfect way of establishing how you establish a cost for fire departments within a regional area. Their best recommendation would, was a recommendation of a seventy-thirty split. So we're fairly close with a seventy-six twenty-four split. In reviewing everything, you know, we are getting, and we have been getting a very good deal for a really long time. And I don't blame the fire department for wanting their full cost. But even at this increased cost, we are still getting a good deal. There's no way that we could form our own fire department, all the capital costs for a station, all the equipment, the training, the administration, to be able to really cut this cost down.
Right. I think, I think I read Ron in your, in the findings that it would cost. It would be so exponential for just the headquarters staff.
Right.
That it would be untenable.
Right. We're, we're not talking, if we, if we formed our own fire department, we'd not have any cost savings. So one of the things that we did negotiate in the agreement, there were, there were a couple of things that, that came in there. One, we, the cost of living went down to two percent. We also made it to where if we have an increase in our fire fund, that that's contributed towards our payment. So in other words, we're not set at the two point one million. Because currently, right now, we are set at a certain amount, and it didn't change what our augmented payment was. That was just set in stone. Now through this contract, if we have, you know, a significant change in our property tax values, and let's say it increases, the fire fund increases by a quarter million or a hundred thousand over the next couple of years, that will then be reflected into that cost. Unfortunately, what we have with this one point two million increase is it, it's now passing the county's structural fire deficit to now to the city of Ridgecrest. Now it's creating a structural deficit in our budget. We did negotiate the ability to request to close one station, to go to one station. However, there are some significant consequences to that if we do. You know, it will double the response time. You know, if there were two incidents at one time, we would be down to just one fire station. So you'd have to make a choice. So there'd be significant, you know, public safety impacts on that. But we did negotiate in there so we could then offer that as a, as one of the abilities of, you know, how we can afford this. You know, do we close a station? Do we make cuts elsewhere in the budget, which would be significant? Or do we find another source of revenue to cover this cost?
Can I ask another few questions?
Sure.
In the, did, did CityGate, well, or any of the rest of your, of your research, did you find that other, maybe even economics would, could be impacted? Like, could we see house values impacted? Would insurance be impacted by the lack, by fire service changing?
We, we did ask the consultant if they could tell us whether or not if we went to one station, it would affect people's fire insurance rates. And there really was no way to tell them because there are just so many different insurance companies that offer, you know, different insurance policies, that there would be no way that they could quantify to be saying, if you went to one station, yes, you would, your, your fire insurance rates would go up. I believe that if we, you know, you know, if you have a metropolitan area like we do, and you have one fire station, and you're basically going to a rural fire response. In other words, they, they base a lot of this on your speed and weight of response. Speed is how quickly can you get to the fire, and the weight is how much equipment can you get there to be able to fight the fire effectively. Going to one station would, would impact both of those significantly. It would impact how quickly we got there because depending upon where the remaining station would be at, would, and, and where that call for service came at within the city, would be, would determine how much longer it would take to get there. And of course, then if you only have, you know, an engine, then do you, you're gonna have, your weight is now gonna have to come from Ransburg or in your Kern, and that's going to be an extended time. So really, closing one station is not something that I would recommend. We negotiated the ability to do it if the community wants to, to save money. But I wouldn't recommend, you know, that would be, I mean, you're talking about all the calls that the fire department goes to for medical aid, fire. One of the findings that we did have during the study was, is that we do have a, a significant number of fires within our community. In fact, I think we were the second highest contract, we were the second highest number of fires in, in the county, when, in the contract cities.
I don't know what to do with that information. I don't know what that means.
What's that?
I don't know what that means. I don't know what that says about our community. We're starting that many fires. I'm jo- I'm joking. That was, that was a joke. I was just joking. Uh, no, I understand. And so noted, I could see where we're going with this. And so then the next question I would have is what have you, as in the staff, and I'm sure you've talked to your department heads, what's the kind of, what would we have to cut? I mean, I can, I don't even want to know if I want to start that conversation because it would, I, I'm sure it'd be egregious, I mean, the amount of stuff that we have to cut. But we should probably talk about it.
Well, one of my recommendations is to start that conversation during the, the budget process.
Okay.
But you're, you're looking at, you know, one point two million dollars is, you know, of a seventeen million dollar general fund is significant. You're talking, yeah, you're talking, you know, ten cops, you're talking roads. So you're talking, this is not a, something that we can absorb over time. Obviously, it, it's phased in over six years, but the end result is the same.
Sure.
And when the end results reach the six years, we're not going to have a sudden reduction either. The likelihood is with costs increasing over the next seven, six years, they've given us a very generous two percent cost change over the next six years, that the odds of another adjustment at the end of that period simply for cost.
Right.
Is equally likely.
Right. You're, you're talking all the inflationary costs that they're gonna have over the next six years. That number's not going to be one point four million.
Right. It's like, that's like-
In six years, yeah.
Yeah.
So the fire fund is approximately nine point three percent of one percent of property tax. So in dollars, how much it is?
So if you take a hundred dollars, if your, if your property tax is a hundred dollars, it'd be nine dollars and thirty cents that goes into the fire fund.
So how much did we get last year? Do you have any idea?
Two point one million.
So that stays with us, Ron, or does it go to?
Well, it goes into the fire fund that goes to pay for our fire service with the county. So what we're doing is you have the, the two point one million that's in the fire-
Bring back that slide, a couple, a couple slides. That'll help, that'll help, the, the two point one is what we brought in.
So, so if you look on the, the middle column-
The net cost is three point six.
Yeah, the middle column, our net cost for fire service is three point six million. And we have two point one million that is the fire fund from the city of Ridgecrest that goes to the fire department. So we have to make up the balance of one point four.
So and every year we are paying them, let's say for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand?
For-
That's in addition, right, to the fire fund?
That's our, that's been, that's been our addition since the last contract, is that.
Right.
So how much did we pay last year? Do you know?
Last year we paid, if you look at the top column, it shows what we've paid over the last five years during the contract annually to augment the fire fund.
So what I'm trying to understand is, we are having one point four, and we are paying two fifty-two?
We're paying, we're paying two seventy-four.
No, one point four is our estimated cost of fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Okay.
Mr. Raj Rautner, if you go to the, the bottom column, right now, we're paying two hundred and seventy-four thousand is existing. Next year, it's going to be four fifteen. The following year, it's going to be five eighty-three. And it's going to top out at, at one point four. And you'll see, you know, an aggregate increase of one point two million. So if you take one point four minus the two seventy-four, it comes up with one point two.
Okay. In the presentation, we have number of calls for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. So do we know the calls for nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one?
I believe, believe one year it was greater, and the next year it was slightly less. So it's, it's roaming around ninety percent.
We're processing our twenty twenty-one call line right now. What we're seeing is a ten percent year-over-year increase.
Ten.
We've been, 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 are the, the individual, you know, that, that's made the call, are they, is there a fee to the, that individual?
There is no fee.
That, that, that was my understanding too. And so, you know, when we were looking at like closing a fire station, the national average, I think when I looked up, it's like 65% and we're responding to 60% of calls. And so shutting down a fire station means that the EMS services are then going to have to pick up, you know, those medical calls if we don't have, you know, the fire department available, you know, able to, to respond. And so, and I don't believe those calls, I believe are charged to an individual. You know, the, to have the ambulance show up or, or EMS services. So those costs would be a pretty high amount of cost inflicted back into the community.
Correct.
Yeah.
For the individual calling it.
For the individual calling it, yeah, that would rely on EMS services versus, you know, the, the fire. I mean, because we're under the national average, but I just see that as not a good result of shutting down a second fire station.
Right, I mean, the biggest, the biggest risk you have with shutting down a fire station, if you exclude the medical calls, is actually having enough personnel to fight a fire and to keep it from spreading.
Along with responding to that 60% of, you know, your calls being, being medical related, so.
Yeah, we, we had discussed with the fire department, well, if you excluded the EMS calls, but you still have the proportional response. You still have, you know, about a 90, 10% response of, of what the fire department would be responding to anyway if you took out the medical aid. So even if we got rid of the medical aid, you know, you're still looking at having to pay for your fire service availability for traffic accidents, fires and other emergencies that, that we need these, these men and women to respond to.
I think it's important to take into consideration too what, what we've seen over the last few months with the availability of ambulances. We can't always assume that another provider will be available to respond. And so having redundancy and having the ability to respond from multiple locations, that on top of our high severity calls, so not all medical aids are alike. Some are as simple as helping somebody up, but we have the, what we call medical aid echo calls where we're life threatening, whether it's respiratory arrest or cardiac arrest, where it is the tasks that are needed to be accomplished in a short amount of time. We need to have a significant amount of personnel to be able to respond in a short amount of time to be able to help that person. So when we look at, and I share Mr. Strand's concerns about reducing services, the consequences of unit availability and be able to respond not just to fires, but to high severity medical aids, rescues, traffic accidents, hazmat calls. These are all concerns that, you know, we need to consider.
Yeah, I would concur. And, and you know, the level of expertise and skill that the fire department brings with it to a call is, is I think top notch.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
So the total calls, 2,461, it is between the two stations we have in the city, right?
Within the city limits.
Within the city limit, so.
Yes.
Which averages to around seven calls per day if I'm correct.
I'd have to pull out my calculator and fact check, but I'll take you as correct on that one.
Seven calls per day between the two stations.
So what we see is we do have what we call surge effect on, you know, so for instance, take an extreme event like the Ridgecrest earthquakes, we had over 100 calls for service within a, a four hour timeframe. But some, yeah, so some days you'll see an average of seven, but you'll have days where we're super busy and we can have 20 plus calls, 30 plus calls. And other days where you're going to go below that average. So that's where having 24 hour unit reliability coming from two stations, multiple locations, gives you that safety factor of that when somebody calls, we'll have someone close by to respond within an appropriate timeframe.
I want to ask a question, and I hope you won't take offense to this. So I'm not asking this question directly at you, I'm asking it of the city manager. But I feel like it's, the public needs to hear some of these questions. And that is, what is, in your research, Ron, is there a price point where the city of Ridgecrest should, I mean, we're going to see the increases over years, should try to invest in its own fire department?
That would take a lot of money.
I know it'd take a lot of capital.
One of the things that, that makes a lot of small cities able to have their own fire departments because they have other smaller fire departments along their border. Because we are so remote and we're in the middle of nowhere, we would have to have a significant amount of staffing on. Because typically you're looking anywhere for a big, a significant structure fire, I think the recommended staffing is 16, up to 24. And so you would have to have that staffing available within your community to be able to respond. Now, right now we have four stations within the Indian Wells Valley to be able to cover what we have of a population of about 40,000 people. And there's probably an argument to be made that we probably need more fire service and not less. So if we went on our own, we'd have to have sufficient numbers because we don't have the mutual aid that would be reliable to respond to assist us.
Right, all those, all those points are noted, but I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is if we.
If there was a, if you.
What's, you know, what's that price point? If we, if we grow to a point, so what, let's just say we're, we're 30,000 folks and we ended up, we ended up at 50, 60. And, and that's, that's where we're, you know what I mean? Like at some point, is there a price point?
I, I think if you, I think if you added it up and had three stations, four people per station, 24/7, and you had the capital to be able to, to build three stations strategically and, and have the capital equipment, then yeah, once you had that money to be able to do that, you'd have a, a breaking point and that's, that's a lot of money.
Okay. I, I know you don't have a crystal ball. I was just, I just want to make sure that we're thinking about it. We've talked about it.
There's, there's also an ability, let's say hypothetically that, you know, we find a way of, of, of paying for this fire service and, you know, there's always the idea of maybe doing a regional joint powers authority with the other small entities. But we run into the same problem that we already have. You know, you would have the shared costs of, of your administration, you know, your fire chief, your bat chief, your inspectors, all that sort of stuff. We currently have that with Kern County Fire. We're currently buying into a system that already is a regional, larger department that has access to, you know, helicopters, fire trucks, going off on our own. We limit our access to that except for under certain mutual aid conditions.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm, I'm asking all the questions.
I appreciate it because we spent, we spent a lot of time researching this to come up with these answers, so.
Sure, so another, another question I'd like to ask, do you think there'd ever be an, is there, would ever be a case where a volunteer fire department would have to augment?
You could have volunteer firemen, but it's the same issue that we have with volunteer police. They have to be trained to a certain standard. And that, that's a lot of time and money to be able to do that. It's just not like it was when I started 36 years ago and you had the on-call firemen that would just run up and they come out of the woodwork everywhere. I think maybe the, the deputy chief can answer this a little bit more, but you have all the, the training and the OSHA standards, everything else that goes with it. You could help augment it, but nowadays it's very difficult to get those people because they have to go through the same training. And so once you train them to become a reserve firefighter, they're more likely capable to go get hired someplace else to make good money other than getting paid nothing.
Absolutely. With the, the standards rising, you know, we, we hold our firefighters to a very professional standard for certifications, not only medical, but learning the, their craigtra, or learning how to be a USAR capable so they can operate in mine rescues, vehicle accidents, big rigs versus big rigs, structural firefighting, not just residential, but commercial firefighting. There's so many standards set forth by the state, by OSHA, by EMSA, that it's just very difficult. The retention issue is something that we're seeing on the career side where the volunteer side is starting to become non-existent.
Roger, and can I pose one more hypothetical for you, deputy chief? And that is, you know, given the situation where there, you have to make a choice, whether it's a structured fire or an accident, where does that call usually go? And I guess is that usually, and I know it's a.
Depends on, depends on who, if they're engaged in, if the fire, or if they're engaged in one or the other, because it's hard to back off, I would assume.
Yeah, so, once again, it's a hypothetical.
It's a hypothetical, but I, I felt like it needed to be asked. These are questions that I think the public would want to know.
So we, it's a first come, first served basis. When we get a call come in, we have a dispatching process that goes through a medical screening and a fire screening. And so we have a priority level based on the type of call that comes in that will dispatch resources or. We give our on-scene battalion chiefs the ability to divert resources based on the calls because not all fires are the same and not medicals are the same. So we try to stay flexible and agile based on the needs and where we, we feel that our resources are best served. But one of the big benefits that, if I can just add from the county fire department, is you get the, the capabilities and the capacity of, of a fire department that has almost 500 career firefighters, 47 stations coming from out, throughout the 8,000 square miles of the county. And when there's a need in Ridgecrest, we're moving up equipment from other communities and to help protect your citizens because we know that the demand shifts throughout the county. And we have that ability to flex fire engines from Lake Isabella or up from Mojave to help serve our community here.
Roger, thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure we flush those questions. I appreciate that. I think that's exactly the answer I was looking for. I don't know if, I wasn't aware of the, that process of, of vetting. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to throw one out here. So union negotiations. You were being asked now to essentially true up costs that the county will be establishing those costs as they go through their process. And I'm not looking at today, I'm looking at 28, 29 in my brain. Is, do we have any say? Do we get any conversation in terms of those union negotiations if those are something we're going to have to true up to at a future date?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I think it, it makes sense. I mean, I think that the, the fire department, one of the things that I think we're all suffering from, and I think I can, I can speak pretty clearly for the chief, our police officers are under, under, underpaid. We're losing them to other departments and we're having, and will be having a difficult time replacing them. I know that the fire department has the same issue as well as the sheriff's department. So I would not blame them if they paid their firemen and women a livable wage. Because at the end of the day, what we want in our community is to have experienced firefighters that come here able to do the job. And so.
I'm not saying they're worth, they're not worth it.
Right, I was simply saying there's, there's a, there's a, there's going to be this, there's going to be another kick at 28, 29. At 2% across the board for the next six years is not going to be sufficient. You know, we're already, we, we already just saw 7% last year. We're going to see another 5 to 7% this year. I mean, we're already sitting behind by 10% going into the first year.
I, I think from, from talking to the, the CAO and the CFO, you know, they, they elected to do the six-year phase-in was to, to not impact because there'd be no way that we could pay for, you know, come 1.2 million dollars next year on the budget. It, it's just going to be difficult to meet those numbers every year. And they decided to set the cost of living at 2%, hoping that we would know that we have, okay, you have these costs going over six years, you're going to have to figure out how you're going to deal with it. And then know at year seven, you know, depending upon what happens with the staffing levels, we, we may grow as a community and require an additional fire station in seven years. We don't know. And, you know, obviously a lot of these things are going to be, I mean, our home prices also affect what we contribute to the fire fund. I mean, if we just had the average, you know, house that, that cost $500,000, you know, you know, throughout California, our fire fund would be probably twice as much and we wouldn't have an issue with this. So a lot of this has to do with factors that are kind of outside of our control. What's the value of our homes? How much do we contribute to the fire fund?
I like the way the contract is written with the provision for, for future expansion, closure and consolidation. So in case we can't find the money, we can always go back and negotiate this, close one of the stations, right?
Yes, but that would, I would say that would be a, that would be a significant impact to the city. That would, that would be.
But still, I mean, you put a provision, so I like that.
We, we put it in there as an option. I, I really think this is a decision that's going to have to be made by the community. What do you want? I mean, we've, I mean, we did our research. We've been getting a very good deal on fire service out here for 50 years. Now the county's coming back and wanting their full cost allocation. I mean, they did give us a discount factor of 15%, which I think is fair because we do provide a strategic location for them out here. I mean, it would be fair for them just to pay, you know, 10% to provide fire service for people out here. So they, they did kind of own up to the, there's a regional benefit to having a, two fire departments in the city that also respond outside the city in the county area, you know, for our residents. So, you know, you're looking at only spending 3.6 million a year for your fire service. And it's a regional fire service that provides a lot of services if we need it. So it's not a bad cost even with this increase. We've just been getting a good deal for a long time and.
I want to just go and make sure I state it. Compliments to city manager Strand and to our city staff. This is a well-negotiated contract. This is a very well-negotiated contract. The 15% discount, the 2% escalation, the phase-in over six years. There's a lot of work that's been done here to make this underpayment to net, to, to actual costs, work for our city, but we're not going to be able to solve this without other revenues at some point. It, it, it's glaring. It's right there. So. Okay. Any other council discussion? Otherwise that will open up to public? Okay. Any public comment?
I got, I got it on for you.
Only for certain people.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't think you'll have the issues.
I don't think you'll have the same issues you do.
Hi, I'm Skip Gorman. I have an easy question. I'm sure it came up with your exhaustive research Kyle's Socratic method. There used to be a really nice fire station on base. Is it still there? And have you considered availing yourselves under urgent circumstances of their help?
I'll let the fire chief, I got the answer, but I'll let the fire chief respond.
Make sure this thing's on. So, yeah, China Lake Naval Weapons Center does have their own fire department and we have a mutual aid agreement with them. And we do request their help on occasion and they do us as well. But because it's mutual, it is their right to say no. If they have their own mission on the base that they have to take care of, it's not an automatic aid agreement like what we have with our own stations in Inukinn or Ransburg that come automatically. So that is something that we use when, when the request is put out, but they don't always respond.
They don't always respond. Thank you for that. I was going to ask, you know, are they obsessively shy with staying on their own side of the fence? I reckon we could make friends with them one of these days. Okay. Okay. My other comment was during the break, I asked the chief a question that I read in the newspaper when manager Strand was interviewed on this issue. He was able to share the retinue of people that made up station personnel. There was the, the chief, truck operator and fireman who hacks through the roof and aims the hoses at the fire. I asked him, since 60% of your visits, calls out were for medical purposes, which of those three is the doctor? Or the medical person? He had a great answer for me. I'll ask him now to repeat it.
So all our Kern County firefighters are trained to the basic level of EMT, emergency medical technician. So they're all capable of performing the, the same lifesaving measures.
I thought that was a great answer. I think that's all I have. I'd like to know more about the base fire station and what it might take. I know they have probably periodically, not very often though, urgent responsibilities at Armored Edge Airfield. But I don't hear about that many. They shouldn't be so shy. I say that to the world. Thank you, my friends.
Thank you, Skip. Any other public comment?
Yes, Mike Neal. Got that? Okay, I'm here. Before I cut to the chase, I'm here to say what's the, what's the real bottom line? Something, some two, two facts from the summary, just on the staff report are basically confusing to me. When it's in section new fire agreement cost allocation method, it says that the county estimated only received an average of 48% of its actual costs as contract city agreements. But then I calculated, well, and you, you even, you know, set it playing out further down the next third, two paragraphs later, the, this increase is going to be 542%. So, so how does the county only get 50%, but they want to charge us 542% more?
Right, that, that could be just a little slight confusing. What I was talking about was not what's contributed in the fire fund, but what we augment it by. Right now we augment the fire fund by 274,000 a year. It's going to go from 274 up to 1.4. If you look, Mr. Neal, at that bottom column, you'll see where it says existing 274,000 and it goes all the way over to 1.4 million.
Yeah, I know.
So if you take that, it's, it's a 542% increase in what we are going to be paying over what we're paying today. Now that 48% includes all of the contract cities. In other words, that was an aggregate number. So it may not represent specifically Ridgecrest, but that was their aggregate number they came up with. As overall, they're only paying 48% of the, the cost allocation.
So that, that would, that would intimate the, a lot of cities are not getting anywhere near as good a deal as we were. Otherwise, you basically just say, well, they got half what they needed. Why don't we just double, or pay, everybody pays double more and that's it. Should be, you know, you'd think it would be that simple, but of course, it's never that simple.
No, there, well, if you look at it, you know, we were paying 200 or 2.4 million. Then we're going to go up to 3.6 million. So currently we're paying 2.4, so we're, we're only paying about maybe.
That's 50%.
Yeah.
Right?
Right. And of course, this is, I mean, there, most of the contract cities are in the same position as the city of Ridgecrest. You have Tatchby, Arvin, McFarland, Wasco, Delano. I think the only city out there that is, that's fully funded is Shafter.
Okay.
So this, this is putting all of the small cities within Kern County in some sort of physical structural deficit that we're all going to have to find a way of resolving.
Well, and, and I can say just, you know, without a doubt, just emotionally, people are not going to say cut our fire service. So that, that's not going to happen, even if they have to pay more to keep it. At least not right now. I mean, we're, we're getting taxed to the bone in this state and, you know, excise taxes on gas like crazy every time you turn around, you know, like I said, the county just bumped, you know, the, the property tax for the landfill, way, way, a huge percentage up, all this. But of course, what's. But of course, what's coming here is we need to tax you more to pay for this. Now, I got a suggestion here. I told myself I was never gonna offer, but, but I'm gonna go ahead and offer it. This is gonna cost the people, basically, it's gonna be an equivalent of another quarter percent sales tax. That's, that's what this amounts to. Probably you're gonna try to throw in some more stuff that you think needs to be funded and get more than that. You know, the $49 per year didn't go too well over here. I believe it got voted down by 80%. But, you know, selling, funding fire service isn't gonna be hard to do. If you wanna do justice by your people, here's a way you can tell them that it'll even out. I've been saying this for years. You're charging too much for the sewer fund fee. If you just dropped the sewer fund fee by a hundred bucks a year, what you can do, because you're taking in a lot of cash into that every single year, I've laid it out, you guys should know it. If you, if you don't remember it, send me an email and I'll lay it out for you again. You don't need to be taking in that much into your sewer fund. You can say, we're gonna cut the sewer fund fee and we just saved you guys the million bucks, or 1.4. So, give us another quarter percent sales tax and you got the 1.4 back. You, you'll have enough money for your sewer plant, then you'll have enough money to pay for your fire services.
Yeah, Mr. Neal, talking about the, the new wastewater facility, we, we are going to be doing a new rate service study before we apply for the state revolving fund. We do have, you're right, we do have a significant amount of, of money into our fund and we are gonna make a significant down payment on our wastewater facility. And one of the things that the city has been doing is trying to protect our rate payers. One of the things we've been focusing on, instead of doing the tertiary treatment, we're doing a secondary treatment. And if somebody needs that, that recycled water, a higher quality, they can pay for it. So, we are looking at designing our plant to be the most efficient as we possibly can. And if we can reduce that wastewater fee, we're absolutely gonna do it. But part of where we're heading, excuse me, part of where we're heading is, is the more we can put down on that, that cost of that plant, the less debt service we're gonna have, the less debt service we have, the less we have to charge. So, we are gonna have a, a transparent rate study that's gonna be conducted based upon what we're gonna pay for the plant, based upon how we are improving our sewer system within the city, and then how, what the costs are to, to operate that facility. So we are gonna be doing a rate study and, and I encourage you to, to keep an eye on it because if we can reduce that amount, we absolutely will.
I was there for the last one. We fought, fought over the amount and they went ahead with, with what we're being charged right now. So, whatever, that, that's one, one of those battles. The last one, you know, I think seriously that, that it's guaranteed you're gonna want more sales tax to pay for this. I don't do, you know, that's what governments do best, they tax their people. You need to set it up as a, some kind of a special fund that certain amount goes into the fire fund and it's only for that, nothing else. It doesn't get just, you know, mixed in the bowl, give us another quarter percent sales tax and we'll, it goes in with the general fund and, you know, we promise blah, blah, blah. Give people something solid and concrete and reportable and accountable that you say, here's what the county charges us, here's what's in the fund, here's what's paid out, here's the difference. And do that from now till perpetuity and it'll go over a lot easier for people in Ridgecrest.
Mr. Neal, I do, I do, you know, one of the, like with Measure L and Measure V, you know, I was a supporter of the Oversight Committee and I think the Oversight Committee's worked. And I know we can disagree on how things have rolled out, but I think we can agree now that we have met what our promise was on Measure V and that was to provide public safety. We still have public safety issues that have, that have risen out of this. We have not increased our staffing and since Measure V's passed, we have not given our officers a raise. And, and trying to be frugal in that area is causing problems for us in being able to continue to deploy officers in the field to provide public safety. Same with the roads. I know we kinda got off on a slow start on that, but you have to admit that was with direction from some, from council, we were able to get the slurry program going. We have Travis Reed on staff now. We are doing a lot with our roads. We're doing a lot of improvements. We could do more if we had more money. Not saying I want more money, but we were doing a lot with what we have. And I think we are on a path to get our roads at an acceptable level where they're under control. So I think we have met our promises with, with Measure V. The committee's there. We have people that are always watching out on how we're spending it. And yeah, we have a disagreement every once in a while over five or $10,000 for a piece of software or something like that. And I get it. That's part of the process. It's holding us accountable. So, I do think that, you know, if we ever go out for something like that, I think it has to be under the same conditions, like you say. And I think that we do get very good service from the fire department. I think there's an argument that we probably need to increase fire services in the future just because of our population, how we're laid out, how our road's structured. But we're not recommending that. We're just trying to go, we're, we're just trying to keep what we have right now.
I, I don't really find a way to argue that. What I'm just arguing is, is, you know, the tax burden on everybody in Ridgecrest is heavy. You know, when, when your $49 a year tax got voted in by 80%, I think that became real obvious to everybody. People just like, tax? No, thank you. I don't want it. Well, you know, that was a non-essential. If you're gonna tax them, I just thought this, anything else specific that you're gonna wanna tax them more for needs to be special funded, special accounted, and transparent to the public. Would you mix it in with the general fund and throw it in to, you know, this multi-page city budget, you know, once a year? That's not, that's hard to follow. I've, I've been in, watching it for 15 years, okay? And it's changed and morphed and all this, but it's still hard to track. And most people are, they're not even gonna go there. Okay? Simple accounting for a fund, the pace for a service is easy to follow.
Yeah, not to blabber this, but I do think the Measure V committee has been doing a very good job of tracking the funds and, and providing a very good, comprehensive report to the community every year. Whether the community reads it or not, it's there, it's there for people to read.
Are you saying Measure V's gonna track this?
Not saying, well, not saying.
You keep bringing up Measure V, I don't, I'm not, I'm failing to see the connection.
Well, I think we're, what we're saying is, well, I'm just gonna chime in here, at least on behalf of, you know, myself, I can't speak for the whole council. That is that, at least since I've been here and that's been the last two years, our staff and the, the city does a pretty good job of tracking the dollars. I mean, I wanna say even more than, I, I can't speak for every other community, but man, there's a lot of oversight here, a lot. And I think we're paying up on all the promises. I mean, keeping track of every dime. I don't know how many awards that our staff keeps winning for being, you know, real efficient, you know, our finance staff. That's not to pat ourselves on the back, it's a good thing, right? It's how it's supposed to work. I, I know you agree with that. I know you.
Agree with that.
And I wanna go on to say one more thing. I would much rather pay some, to something that happens here benefits Ridgecrest than another state tax. I'd rather, I'd rather us handle, I'd rather handle things on a local level.
I mean, I don't see how, like I said, I already wanted to start it out.
Or county.
That, that's not gonna happen. I don't see how that's not going to happen. Okay? So, I'm just saying.
No, but what you're saying, you're giving us.
Increase pain, try to find a way to, to get some increased transparency with the funding of it and the spending out of it.
Sure, I don't know how, well, and what I was trying to say to you is, I don't know how we can further increase transparency. I don't know how it could get more transparent than it is. I mean, it's online. Our whole budget's online.
Well, yeah, but like I said, try, try to paw your way through it. You gotta have years of experience looking, I mean, I've done it.
Roger that, so all I'm saying.
It's taken me two or three years to get where I could follow it.
Okay, so all I'm telling you, Mike, I'm telling you directly as a council member, I don't know how else to increase transparency. The money that we do spend has been, it seems, it seems to have been efficient. We do as much as we can and I, I know what you're trying to say. But I can't, I can, what I can say for everybody else up here is, there's no malice or nefarious means or, or negativity. Everybody up here is trying to do the right thing.
Well, I didn't never accuse anybody of that. I'm just talking about making the pain a little more bearable is what I'm talking about. And it's really, you know, we've done it actually with Measure V that's been brought up two or three times now. The Measure V report, here's the spending for this and, and here's the funding for that. Well, something similar for the fire fund so that people say, why am I paying, you know, more sales tax than this stinking California, you know, Ridgecrest, blah, 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 you know, and you know the, the rant. You know, well, part of it's fire service. You want, why am I paying that? Well, go to this simple and easy to understand page on the city website and look at the funding. That's not, that's numbers, that's accounting, that's not hard to do. It just takes, say, a little bit of extra effort. That's all I'm talking about.
Thanks, Mike.
Do we have any other public comment? I heard phones, but I don't see any lights, so I'm gonna assume phones are still not functional at this stage.
Another backup.
They are?
Why do we just not have lights?
Oh. They're this. Okay.
Hit or miss?
Yeah. See no other public comment? I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. Any final council comments? Peggy?
No, I thank you, sir, for being here.
Absolutely, it's my pleasure.
Yep, I appreciate you being here and talking through some of the smaller things. I'm sure we'll have more questions. We, we talked about bringing this back up, didn't we?
Yeah, so.
As an item of discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to still ask and, and, and call for a motion in regards to this, but we will bring it back up for public discussion. Just to allow for any public questions in regards to how the numbers were achieved or, or what number of calls of service or how, how this methodology was established, we'll provide that opportunity. I wanna reiterate our appreciation for you being here tonight. I know it's been a long night. I wanna reiterate my appreciation to Chief, to City Manager Strand. I don't know how many times I'm gonna do that. I keep trying to demote you, I don't know why, or demote him technically, I mean. And, and the last thing is, is, is I agree, this is not what anybody wants to see, but I think there's some real important factors here, which is that this was a well-negotiated deal. There's a great discount that's been applied to, to, to represent our strategic. We're being given sufficient time to find a revenue solution and to make sure that we have this problem, you know, at least controlled and contained for a period of time. And that last but not least, oh, well, two more things. One, we can't afford to do this on our own. And last, I don't think anybody in the public, I certainly hope the public does not agree that, that sacrificing the station should be our choice in this matter. I think with that, I'm going to ask if there is a motion for approval of the resolution approving the agreement between the city of Ridgecrest and the county of Kern to provide fire protection services within the city of Ridgecrest.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second.
Nope.
Roll call?
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rutnam.
Aye.
Mr. Heyman.
Aye.
Ms. Breeden.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, so our last item of discussion items for this evening is item number eight. This is discussion, thank you, sir, for your time. I do greatly appreciate it. Discussion regarding the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority and I, Mr. Heyman, I know we haven't met yet this month, but I wanted to, if you don't mind, before you give your report, I had a quick piece of information that I don't know, the public maybe didn't pick up on or picked up on, but it got shared with me and I thought it was fantastic. And it, it's in regards to an article from the Bakersfield Californian that highlighted that the only GSP that was approved in Kern County was ours and eight others were denied in San Joaquin Valley or rejected. The only GSP that was given, that, that passed DWR in the San Joaquin or Kern, or Kern Counties, San Joaquin Valley and Kern County was the Indian Wells Valley. And I think that's an important fact to be aware of is, is we did make a good plan and that plan passed the buster that others did not. So with that, Mr. Heyman.
That pretty much sums it up.
Good job.
So we have not met, the GA has not met. We will be meeting next Wednesday, which I believe is the ninth, February 9th. Yes, so we'll be meeting next Wednesday. And then, so I should have more to report out on our next city council meeting. Just to add to that, you know, there, I think, did they give the total of the number of, there was 40.
Forty.
Forty-two critically overdrafted.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Forty-two critically overdrafted basins. Thirty-four of those 42 were rejected. Eight were approved and one in Kern, one in Kern County.
And only one in Kern County.
So.
None in San Joaquin, one in Kern.
Yeah. And so I, I think that's a, a very positive finding for, for our basin and for our GSP. So, anyway, that's all I have for tonight unless anyone has any questions.
I always got at least a few questions. At least a few questions.
Okay, Kyle.
Well, the first one is, I don't know with the, you know, with the charter of the groundwater authority. I try to watch it, so I try to watch every single water district meeting and every PAC meeting and tech, if I can get a hold of a meeting, I'm watching it. Sometimes I miss some because I get busy, but I try to watch them all. And so what I'm, is there, who's responsible for the data gaps? Any data gaps that we see, right? And now, I would, I would have said up until the GA was formed in, what, 2016? When was the GA formed? 18 or 16? I thought it was an even number, I'm sorry, I, I forgot.
I believe it was.
16, I think.
I believe it was 16, but you know.
So of course, the water district was, was coming up with, you know, filling data gaps, going out to do what research needed to do. At what point is that handed off to the groundwater authorities? The groundwater authority's job. Now, you may not have this answer, but I guess I'm just posing it towards you to, to come back with because it's something that, it's a common topic in the valley. How do we, how do we bridge data gaps? Data gaps have a huge reflection on everything. And so my, my question is, who's responsible for that? Is, is the water district bridging those gaps and we're working, you know, the GA is working together with them? Or is it the, the GA has a certain, there's a charter, right? There's a split of, of, you know, a work division?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. I, I will probably not answer that right now. I mean, I have my.
I don't expect you to.
I have my own personal answer of, you know, who I think is responsible for it, but I think it'd be a good question that we could, you know.
It's just something, something to bring up. I see, you know, over, I mean, geez, for a while. And I know it, even the last time I talked to the water district folks, not just board, but their staff, they have a lot of ongoing work they're doing. The GA has a lot of, a lot of ongoing work they're doing. And so I guess my thought process goes to, are we doubling any work that we don't need to double? Is it a difference in not just, not just contractors, but consultants? You know? Maybe, maybe it's a consultant difference, you know? And, and are we coming up with the right data? It's just, I'm always gonna wonder about data.
I, I guess that's part of the, you know, question I would have is, whose data gaps are you referring to?
Sure.
Or, you know.
Oh, I, you know, me personally, I mean, in general.
I mean, so if an entity has a data gap, is it their responsibility or is it, you know, the GA's data gap or is it the?
Sure, good point.
Staff's data gap or so.
And everybody has a.
Asking about that data gap, I guess, really depends on.
Sure, and let me, let me be honest, everybody has an agenda.
Yeah.
All right, so, and data, data ends up driving that agenda, so that's not lost on me, but, sure. It was just a, it was an overall general question that I wouldn't mind seeing posed, you know, who's responsible and what are we doing with that? I, I think on the, on the whole, that's, that's it. I'm gonna, I got pages and pages of questions here, but I mean, at some, I mean, you haven't met, man.
Yeah, we haven't met this one. I, I did wanna go ahead and, and let me just go ahead and, and put it out there again. Thank you. I know Councilman Heyman and I know Councilman, Councilwoman Breeden were both at the adjudication here, meeting that was held. And I just want to, again, if the public is looking for information in regards to the adjudication, especially in regards to their rights and the things that they should be taking steps for in regards to their individual properties, that video's out there on YouTube. Go watch, ask questions. I believe they're gonna be doing another, another meeting here in February. I think they said they were doing another one of some kind. With DWR.
Yeah, I have not heard of a.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, I could, I could be wrong, but, but the key is, the video's out there, it's on YouTube. Please, just don't ignore the letter, take the moment to understand your rights and, and the information within it.
Definitely. I mean, there's a, I've, I've stated it before, when I went to the water district and I asked I mean, there's a, I've, I've stated it before when I went to the Water District and I asked them, and I, I have, I hold the same sentiment that, you know, we imported water as a priority. It's a priority of mine as one council member, I can't speak to the whole council, but I, I think it's important. I don't see how we get to growth. I don't see how we have growth past, you know, when we, when we end up at the end of adjudication, whatever that looks like, who knows what that's going to look like? I'd imagine there's going to be a line drawn under certain numbers. And once that line is drawn, how do we grow past that? Do we? How does that even happen? And so those are, that, yes, that's a priority of mine. And I think what I was getting at is, sometimes there's a little bit of a converging, diverging message between us and the Water District. That doesn't make them wrong or us wrong, so to speak, but it's certainly, it's still ever present and it's good that the public at least is aware of that fact, that there's sometimes a diverging message and, and priorities. I'm sure we'll get there eventually. We haven't been, that's something else. I'm bringing up in the topic of the groundwater authority because I think us being representatives for everybody in the city and, you know, the, the stuff that we cover isn't just water, it's, it's everything, right? So, and we're going to see water impact everything, economics and you name it, right? So, I just want to keep bringing all that up while we're here, but I won't dig too deep into it. And I'm sure that you guys on the groundwater authority are tracking everything and you're all over it. I'm sure of it.
I just realized, you guys realize we had the trifecta tonight? We had, we had trash, fire and water. Our trash, public safety and, and, and water all in the, I just, I just, that, this, I hadn't picked up on that until just now, so. Earth, wind and fire, we were there, earth, wind, fire tonight. Is there any other council comments? Anything else for you to share? Any public comment?
Yeah, once again, Mike Neal. So the short answer to the question Mr. Blades is bringing up about who's responsible for data gaps, well, there is a man, his name is Steve Johnson, Stetson Engineers. That is his job. If you see data missing, he's the one that didn't get it there.
Well, for the, for the GA, right, for their charter, but I mean, there's some, but the Water District goes out and spends a lot of money and time gathering data.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, that would imply that they're doing work they shouldn't be doing and I don't think that's the case. I think that they're, they handle their organization pretty well.
I'm just addressing what you're talking about, the data gaps, okay?
So my data gaps also refers to the Water District. They're, they're collecting a lot of the same, same data.
And they give it to the Water Resource Manager. They don't neglect that duty. I don't know that there's anything that's supposed to have ever come from the Water District that they didn't get. Now, certain pieces of essential data, which, which by the way, just the, the water report for year 2021, I guess, just draft just came out today and there's, there's a big essential piece of data about, related to the total pumping in the valley that's just not in there. It's just not there. Now, last year's showed a significant difference in the prior claims as to what the groundwater storage was, as to what it actually was reported to be. I mean, it was a lot, it was huge.
Was it the pumping or the storage?
Storage, which is be your sustainability.
So how do we, how do we, how do we figure out that storage? How was that, how was that calculated?
Whatever.
Because I don't, I don't know if we have a way of calculating the storage.
They claim to be the gods of, of water data, so that's what they, that's what they put out. And it was really, really big. It raises a lot of questions, but, you know, that's, that's supposed to be their job and, and if we can believe them, then we have to wonder why such a big change. But anyway, that's, that's, that's so much for that. Just what I'd stand up here and, and having listened to and all this, some of the questions about the adjudication lawsuit for the people in town, which I know for sure that there are, there are a lot of people in this valley who were not happy with things that happened on the GA, were not happy with the, the rapidity of having the replenishment fee charged to them. So the valley is so unhappy, they ain't paying it. They, they got one or two separate lawsuits over it.
To the detriment of the taxpayer.
So it's not, it's not coming across very well. And adjudication lawsuit, for my part and a lot of other people's part, is welcomed so that it, it forces everybody to the negotiation table, as was explained in detail at the last workshop, gets them to the table, put their claims and their data out there and, you know, make them work it out. The Navy just has gotten to just sit back and just enjoy their supposed Federal Reserve water rights, which we can, you know, debate facts about whether they really have that or not for a long time, not going to do that, would be pointless. But we look forward to having that. And I've looked at some of the aspects of Antelope Valley adjudication and all the fears, things that were brought up, baking out like the Water District was going to slam the de minimis users. They didn't get slammed in Antelope Valley. They got their two acre feet per year, some of, I think they're allowed to up to three. So I seriously doubt if those guys are going to have a problem in this valley at all. It's just going to be.
I don't, I don't know if you can say that, Mike. I don't know if you can say that. I think you're, I think you're speaking for a whole lot of de minimis users and saying, this is a court case, this court case hasn't even been, it hasn't even been visited.
I'm just telling you how it came out down there.
I, I'm telling you, I sat right there and I watched that whole workshop and as much as I respect them for doing it, what I also noticed is there was a lot of things they didn't answer. Now, on purpose, I understand that. I'm sure there's things that we wouldn't answer if we were in the same position.
Sure.
Sure, no disrespect to them, but we can't. You're sitting up there, I mean, you're making definitive statements, brother, about things that I don't think we could know.
I can easily make a definitive statement about a fact.
What's that?
That's there. I just told you, if you listen again, please.
I, I will.
Antelope Valley adjudication gave like 1.2 to two acre feet per year to de minimis pumpers and, and what I saw indicate they could take it up to three. And it's like, that's what you can get, no, no big deal. That's, so take it as you will, it's how that's going to work that way up here or not. I'm just giving you an example.
Who knows the course system, right?
It's a very similar overall situation, so take it for, for, you know, what you want to take it or not. So a lot of people trust that that lawsuit is going to come out, it's going to come out fair for everybody. And I don't believe there's any indication the Water District is trying to slant that in their favor and for the city to, you know, not come alongside the Water District. Tried to point out before, you guys have parallel constituencies, almost exactly the same people. There's not any possible reason why you and the Water District shouldn't be on the same page.
There, there are reasons.
Because you represent the same people.
There, there are reasons. There, there's reasons, we've stated them over and over. We have, that's why we have these conversations with the Water District. We're sitting down with their folks, their staff, their, and we actually seem to understand why we're converging a little bit. They have fundamental outlooks on, on what's going on in this valley that are different, at least from mine. Okay, and I'm not going to back up on it and I don't think they're going to back up on theirs. We'll bully for them. Good for them, Mike, but I'm not going to sit here and keep, and, and, I'm not going to pretend like it's not there.
One could say that they have a lot of experience with water, the city council doesn't really have a lot, so take that for what you want.
Well, I take, and we have a pretty good legal staff, they have a pretty good legal staff. We rely on consultants, we rely on, I mean, the groundwater authority, which you have all these, so you, I mean, if we want to pose hypothetical questions, why aren't we directly in line with the Water District? Hypothetically, why isn't the Water District in line with Kern County and San Marino and Inyo and the City of Richcrest? All of us representing people, we're not shirking our duty.
And there's a lot of reasons for that.
Well, I'm just, I mean, we're posing hypotheticals and I'm just wanting, and you, I know a lot of times you don't like it when we don't respond back to you, so I'm trying to respond back to you.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't mind it at all. And other than that, I'd just like to say, after the, the past slanderous letter by Keith Lemieux back in September, it pleases me no end to see a different lawyer attending these meetings. I would do quite well not to have to ever see Keith Lemieux in these chambers or on that screen again, so I appreciate that.
I'm sure you'll see him again, Mike.
I'm pretty sure you'll see him again.
He's still, he's still part of our legal staff, man.
Okay. On that note, Martin, once again, congratulations on your partnership with Mr. Lemieux's firm. Okay.
Oh, I can't hear him, he's just, he's talking away.
He's on mute. I think you're muted.
Oh, man.
I said I'm very pleased and very happy to be working with Keith and glad to be part of the team.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next item is, oh, where's my little cheat sheet? Getting late. Ten o'clock. I think this is the longest one we've done together. Trifecta.
Kyle's back.
Kyle, Kyle. You just want me to go away again?
Okay, okay, the next is committee reports. Infrastructure Committee, Kyle?
Oh, all right. Hold on, I have notes.
We didn't meet.
Damn. He's right. Uh, I actually called in, so Solomon, if you can, go ahead.
He's trying to share.
Hey, I'm trying to be, you know, I'm sure people, everybody's started hearing me talk tonight.
Infrastructure Committee, we met on January 27th. We talked about street lighting on Downs.
Oh, I'm sorry, you can't hear you so well, Solomon.
Oh, sorry.
We, we discussed street lighting on Downs update, still waiting for SCE to complete design and Mr. Reed is working on that. And then the other item we discussed was five-year rehabilitation plan update. Mr. Reed revised the salary list for the missed underground locations. So that is covered and then we had a placeholder for bike lane infrastructure. And there was a public comment from Mr. Henry Deng about mini roundabouts. And then Mr. Reed is working with him on that. Did I miss anything, Mr. Reed? That's it, right? Yeah, so that's all I have to report.
Thank you, sir. Other committees, boards and commissions, oh, look, look who's here. Kern Cog, Kyle?
That's right, I got the next two. So, so Kern Cog, there, there wasn't a lot that happened. I guess this is mostly for Mr. Reed. CMAC went through just on the consent calendar without a hitch, so that was good. I'm glad that we got all that worked out. Also at the Kern Cog meeting, we did something called city selection. Basically, it's where, you know, as electeds move in and out, they get placed in various roles. I don't know, Peggy, do you, were you ever on Kern Cog? Were you aware of all that? Kern Cog, were you ever a part of that?
Yes.
Okay. The city selection committee, I guess it just comes up once a year, right?
Once a year, yes.
Once a year, and they hadn't met since in a long time.
Two years because of COVID.
All right, so we just went through and pointed people and, and then some of the rotations for different committees are year by, like, they're just, Richcrest has a certain amount of years, it just goes in a tiered level. Not really people being nominated and everything just went, the meeting was five minutes. It was, it was no time at all. Let's see. We have, for District Nine, we have a new Caltrans rep, Kristen Helen, I believe is how her last name is pronounced. Okay, and I, I don't.
I don't want to interrupt, but Kyle, since you mentioned Caltrans and I noticed that it was on there, just going back, you know, there, there's a big push being made for the adopt a highway programs and they actually added an incentive program now, $250 a quarter if the group can document that they've adopted a portion of highway and, and are conducting it on a regular basis. I have noticed because I'm, one of the groups that I've worked with is going to be doing that, but if there's a community group out there, someone that's looking for something that they can do on an ongoing basis and help to fund their, their events or things, that might be something to take a look at. Sorry, just, you said Caltrans and it jumped.
No, that's, that's good. So Kern Cog mostly consists of stuff that's going over on Bakersfield, obviously. I mean, if I'm being blunt, Kern Cog is usually about allocation of funds, about money. Well, where's, where's most of the money going to end up? Over there. And I know that there was past, city council's member, Steve Morgan, worked real hard and ended up getting some funding for, to fix a portion of Richcrest, I think it was.
Richcrest Boulevard.
Richcrest Boulevard, so kudos to him for that, but I think it took a long time to get that kind of attention over here on the, on the east side, so anyways. Constant voice, yeah, absolutely. Thanks for keeping me straight, Fricka. Anyways, that's all I got.
Okay. City manager report.
A new report this time.
Oh, really? Couldn't add anything to tonight's wonderful conversation?
Well, I was going to give an update on Casino Land, but we took care of that earlier.
We took care of that one already. Future agenda items. Well, the one future agenda item is, as we discussed, just again, for anybody who didn't hear it, we will have a discussion item on the agenda for, I believe it'll be three, two? Yeah, I was going to say three, three, but I, but I, but I think I fly home on three, three. At that meeting, I will not be present, guys, I'll be dialing in from DC, but three, two. And we'll give the public an opportunity to ask any questions in regards to the fire contract or any, any other things that they're asking for clarification. And I don't have any other future items.
The organic waste ordinance is coming to the council in the next meeting.
Yes, Megan indicated that earlier, that the first reading of the ordinance will be coming at the, the second meeting in February and then second reading probably will be that first meeting in March.
As long as I can get a posted time latest.
Correct.
Yes. Okay, mayor and council comments. We're not going to let Kyle talk this time. We're going to let Kyle go first so that we can all then say, we got nothing else to say.
I got nothing else to say.
Oh, okay. Solomon, anything?
It's a good meeting.
Great.
I want to thank Mr. Strand for the work he has done on the fire agreement. I appreciate that, thank you.
Scott?
I just want to add to that, I want to thank Megan and, and for their work on the, on the, the trash and, and their current waste management and, and also Ron Strand and, and all the work that the staff and city has done on the, on this fire issue. We got a couple of big issues ahead of us and it's going to take a little work and getting through it, but I think it was an outstanding meeting and hats off to everybody.
I only have a short one. I just wanted to thank staff and, and council members who have been working on social media. There is so much stuff coming from the city and I'm seeing great response, so I thank you all. Good job.
Well, that, thank you, Peggy, that. We're, we're having fun doing it. I would say, I'd say me and Isabel are meeting up again tomorrow, so we've got our, our Thursday noon date for TikTok. Location, location can be guessed based on the topics of the day. And then I have two, I think, which, this was a great meeting. It was, I mean, this was the trifecta, it's been five hours, but public, this is the transparency you're asking for, this is the conversations and the information you're looking for. We are getting it out there. Again, you have a mailer coming in your mailboxes called Ridge.
Report?
Report? I didn't want to have to go to my paper. And please, we really would appreciate your participation. Remember, we need to know what you guys are thinking about these priorities and how we're going to solve them. And then last but not least is, I can't tip my hat to her because she isn't here, but Narissa Wagner, Megan, the Parks and Rec Department for submitting the Clean California grant application. That is, I, I, people, people always ask, you know, how does, how do grants happen? Does this happen, that happen? But I just want to just give you that little insight that we went for SPP and we went in the fourth round and that was for the pool grant. And we went in the last round of opportunity. And I clearly can tell you that if we had went in the first or the second or the third, we would have greatly improved our odds because of, we learned so much about some of these programs and the scoring. And your team did a spectacular job.